Are you all ready? With the Cannabis King and the HR person. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to open the Board of Supervisors meeting. We will be adjourning into closed session. If any member of the public would like to comment on the closed session item or any item on the agenda, they can Zoom in on the meeting. The Zoom contact is on the front of the agenda. Ms. Glanville, could you please read the closed session item?
Item number one is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organizations, service employees, international union SEIU, county public safety employees association CCP SCA, Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association DSA, and Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Union SMU.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are none.
Okay, seeing no public comments, we will adjourn into closed session and we will reconvene at nine o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. I'll be ready.
Thirty-nine years.
Good morning. Again, I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would like to Zoom in on the meeting, on the front page of the agenda, it gives you the contact to Zoom in. You will be on mute if you have any questions or comments. Just raise your hand or go to the chat bar and Ms. Glanville will let you in. Will the supervisor who has a birthday today, please do the pledge? Thank you. Please stand.
Hi, let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we wish to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little pregnant pause there. Ms. Glanville, could you please report out of closed session?
Item number one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organizations, service employees, international union SEIU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association CCP SCA, Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association DSA, and Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Union SMU. Board action, there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Are there any staff announcements this morning?
Yes, this is Lisa. Good morning, Madam Chair and honorable members of the board. I'm not too sure why my video feed is not giving you the opportunity.
This is Lisa Medina for the record.
Yes.
Go ahead, Lisa. Go ahead, Ms. Medina.
Lisa Medina, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Lisa Medina with the Environmental Management Agency. I just wanted to announce that next Tuesday, November 24th, we are having a free microchip clinic at our Animal Services located at 901 Jeff Tuttle Drive. And we're really looking forward to this. This is something that we are giving back to our community, and we're real grateful and thankful for all the contributions, the support we get from them. So this is just our little way of giving back. The free microchipping clinic will take place from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. next Tuesday, and we will have treats for everybody, so please come and see us. Thank you.
Will there be treats for adults?
Yes, there will be treats for adults. Come on down. And the reason why we made it to 6:00 p.m. is it gives our coworkers an opportunity to go home and get their pets if they haven't been microchipped already. So it kind of gives them that opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Ms. Galino also had a staff announcement.
All right.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. A couple of announcements. One is that we are very, very close to being awarded the two CDBG grants that we applied for to provide low-interest loans to businesses and/or possibly make them grants for our small businesses. So I'm very excited. Hopefully, we'll hear on that in the next week. The other thing that I have is tomorrow, I'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce to do a business walk in San Andreas, reaching out to our businesses to see how they're doing and how we can provide help.
Supervisor Tufanelli.
Yes, Kathy, good morning. Good to have you back. Can you please explain under the parameters of the grants for the small business loans, what the definition of the small business is?
So the definition of a small business is under 500 employees, so it's pretty much most of our businesses in Calaveras County. There's two programs. One is for loans or potential grants of up to $50,000. And then part two is loans above $50,000, up to $100,000. They're very low-interest loans, and we'll be working with a loan underwriter in Ashley Merced through their Small Business Development Corporation down there. So the first grant that we'll receive for the smaller loans or the microloans under 10,000 is a $250,000 award, and then the larger one, for the larger loans, is a $500,000 grant.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you. Are there any others?
Mr. Maurer also had an announcement.
Mr. Maurer.
Good morning, members of the board. Peter Maurer, Funding Director. I just wanted to let the Board know that we are about to release a draft of the zoning map update. One of the requirements of the general plan is that we bring our zoning map into conformance with the new land use designations. We also are going through all of the interim zones, the unclassified highway service zones, and bringing them into context with the rest of the zoning code. So I'm working with the GIS team right now to get that uploaded to the county's GIS portal. I hope to have that done by early next week. We intend to then release, do a press release and let the public know that the zones, you know, new zoning maps are available for review, have that during the month of December so that the public has plenty of time to review those maps, make sure that we didn't make any major errors, and then start the hearing process early next year. So I just want to let the board know that's moving forward.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Maurer on that? Mr. Mills?
I do. Peter, is there quite a monumental number of parcels that are in this changeover, or is it just a matter of formality?
No, this is going to be a big effort. There are probably in the range of 5,000 parcels, primarily ones that are zoned unclassified. The unclassified zones, like I said, is an interim zone, and how do we have a general plan? We want to, you know, remove that zoning designation and apply a new permanent zone to that. So the majority of those are for those interim zones. We do have several hundred parcels that were, became incompatible with land use designation, and so there will be some downzoning of those parcels, but it's not a significant amount. But there are several hundred that are included in that list as well.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Maurer, congratulations on your Circle of Service Award from the California State Association of Counties. For the record, Mr. Maurer is one of only five staff people throughout the state of California who received this for his work that he's done for counties and for the association. And we're really honored to have you part of our team. Thank you very much, Mr. Maurer. Congratulations.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Are any other staff comments?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to the Public Health update. Ms. Stranger, are you with us?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I am. Let me see. There we go. Thank you. Apologies. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kristin Stranger, Health and Human Services Agency. Today, I actually have quite a few updates to provide the public as it pertains to COVID-19 and its impact here in Calaveras County. In terms of statewide numbers, as of November 15th, 2020, our statewide members for COVID-19 positive cases are at 1,029,235. Statewide, we have experienced 18,263 fatalities. Local data includes information that has been updated as of this past Friday, and as you know, it's part of our regular Friday, Tuesday releases, we will be updating these numbers and informing the public this afternoon. But currently, we have 390 active cases of COVID-19 in our, excuse me, 390 confirmed cases in our community. Active cases remain at 24, and we have experienced 21 fatalities thus far. An update that we released yesterday afternoon, as it was made public during the governor's new press announcement, is that Calaveras County has been moved to a more restrictive tier, the orange or moderate tier. This is a movement that has come as part of a modification to the blueprint for a safer economy process, and I will cover what that all entails in a moment. But for the purposes of informing the public and the board, Calaveras County remains at the moderate or orange tier effective yesterday afternoon. We are one of four counties who remain in this tier, and as you know, the bulk of the state has moved to the most restrictive tiers due to surges in disease as well as impacts on the testing positivity rate. On November 16th, 2020, Governor Newsom announced the utilizations of the state's emergency break, built into the California's blueprint for a safer economy. Due to an unprecedented surge in the rate of increase of cases of COVID-19 in every region of the state, the California Department of Public Health implemented immediate changes to its tier assignment process. So what is new? The tier assignments now may occur at any day of the week and may occur more than once a week when CDPH determines that immediate action is needed. Counties may move back more than one tier if CDPH determines that there is a need for intensive intervention. Those types of considerations include the rate of increase in new cases and/or test positivity rates, public health capacity, and other epidemiological factors. Counties may move with one week of worsening metrics. As you know, it used to be that prior to the emergency break being utilized, counties would have weeks of data before one could move to a more restrictive tier. Now that process has been modified, and counties can move with one week of worsening metrics. The most recent reliable data will be utilized to complete this assessment. In light of the extreme circumstances requiring immediate action, counties will be required to implement any sector changes the day following the tier announcement. So what that means is prior to the emergency break utilization, counties were given three days for local industries and sectors to be able to modify themselves to become in line with the new assigned tier status. That has changed. Now they are to be in compliance the following day, which is for us. Orange happened yesterday, today is the day. And then lastly, county requests for tier adjudications will not hold the current county in the current tier during the adjudication process. So prior, there was a process for counties to have the ability to engage the state to go over a number of local factors and basically engage to try to make the case that the county should remain at the current tier that they were in. And when you did that, it paused the tier for the temporary time while that adjudication process was going forward. That has been modified also as part of the emergency break process. Counties will now be required to move immediately. Given the current environment of the rapidly escalating cases and the widespread disease transmission across California, the tier adjudication requests are very unlikely to be approved unless there is extreme, unique circumstances, and the data are submitted justifying how the county is not impacted by the state life increases. The last point that I wanted to make is that the emergency break does not alter the state guidelines governing school reopenings. Schools that have already reopened when a county was in a less restrictive tier may remain open if that county moves to the purple tier. As you know, all Calaveras County schools, the public schools in our community, have reopened in some manner with extreme modifications, of course. So those schools, as I've said since the beginning, our job at public health is to support the local schools in whatever method of educational delivery that they feel is best, and so at this current time, they do remain open, and they do have done a fantastic job of preparing their school site protection plans and engaging in all of the preventative behaviors, and so that is a current status for local schools. So getting back to a few other updates. In terms of Calaveras County, you know, I just went over a number of statewide increases that are going on. Those two remain in Calaveras County. As you saw in our last press release, we do have an uptick as well in cases, hence the movement to the orange tier. So in Calaveras County, cases do continue to rise. A little bit of information about where we're seeing through the epidemiological tracking, where we're seeing cases become in contact and become, you know, receive or come in contact with the COVID-19 positive people. What we're seeing is about half of the county's COVID-19 cases are suspected to have been exposed within the county. About one quarter of the cases are suspected to have been exposed out of the county, and the source of the exposure for the remaining cases remain unknown. So the types of, from the epidemiological tracking for suspected types or sources of exposure, the most frequent exposure environments have been in either the healthcare settings, followed by the household transmission, which has been a large number as well, and then, of course, some workplace settings. So as I mentioned, the state is seeing an increase in COVID-19 hospitalizations as well as intensive care unit admissions. We too are experiencing an increase in COVID-19 patients at our local hospitals, not to the levels that are warranting any sort of surge, but they are impactful. I'd like to continue to recognize the efforts of the amazing local healthcare providers in our community. They have been on the front lines and doing a phenomenal job. It's been a while since I provided an update on what surge plans are here in Calaveras County, but given the increases, I think it's appropriate to review the surge plan efforts and preparations. So our local hospital, Mark Twain Medical Center, Mark Twain Medical Center has the ability to surge up to 17 beds beyond their normal 25 beds. In the event they need to surge additional beds, they do have the ability to utilize the large regional site, alternate care site that is in the Sacramento area, the old Arco Arena. That was initially set up for 700 beds, and as the governor mentioned yesterday, those sites do have the ability to stand up rather quickly. So a lot of preparation has gone on between the time when the pandemic first began and now to be able to be, so I would say as a state, we are definitely much more prepared to respond to surges than we were at the very beginning. And then, of course, we do also retain the ability here to operate an alternate care site should we need. Of course, staffing levels are a concern, so we would need to draw upon state resources if that was to occur. But I'd also like to give another update on Project Room Key, which was an initiative that went forward and began actually in April. So the goal of Project Room Key is to provide non-congregate shelter options for people experiencing homelessness, to protect human life, and to minimize the strain of the healthcare capacity. Calaveras County has done a phenomenal job of implementing this program. So far, since April, 61 persons have been served, which includes 47 households through this Project Room Key program. 10 persons remain in the non-congregate sheltering and are actively participating in their Housing Focus Case Management Services. Some of the successes include 51 people who have exited the Project Room Key service. Five of them have moved to other housings such as domestic violence shelters, substance abuse recovery programs, those types of things. 16 individuals have exited into stable housing situations. 28 have exited the program. Of those, we've got 16 that have exited into permanent housing solutions and are still actively engaged with Housing Focus Case Management Services on their road to self-sufficiency. And then we have had a few people who have exited for noncompliance reasons. We continue to work with these individuals in our community, connect them to resources, and again, the Housing Focus Case Management is such an important and vital portion of this program. That's one of the reasons that we are seeing such phenomenal success of individuals who have been experiencing homelessness move to permanent housing, even in the current situation that we have right now with the lack of housing options as well as the impact so greatly on our economy. So I would like to also recognize the efforts of the team members at Health and Human Services and local community partners who have been actively engaged in this program, as well as the individuals themselves who are doing all of the hard work to move towards self-sufficiency. This information, again, for accessing this resource, is available on our COVID-19 webpage. Again, a reminder to all that our COVID-19 webpage does have a plethora of resources, community resources, food pantry resources, information about how to obtain benefits if one needs additional food, cash aid, those types of services are all available either in person or online or over the phone. If anybody has questions about the Project Room Key program, again, there's a flyer on our website that's being updated, but they could also call 209-754-6734. Moving on to some key messages. So whether an individual is in public or at work, it's critical that they take recommended actions to prevent exposure while away from the home. This includes all of the measures that we've all become quite accustomed to hearing, but they're very important and continue to be important, and so that we must not waver from recognizing their importance. Things such as hand washing, wearing your face covering, practicing physical distancing, staying home when you're sick, all of those still remain just as important as they did the day that the pandemic started. Also, due to the upcoming holidays, you have seen some more additional communication statewide as well as locally, reminding individuals about the importance of continuing to adhere to those measures even in the holiday season. So the state has released information about gatherings, urging our community and our state as a whole to refrain from the traditional types of gatherings as much as possible. If you are going to gather, remembering that to keep the number of households below three, encouragement to go outside, staying home if you're sick, wearing your face coverings, all of those different types of things, and those are all, all of those best practices, and the gatherings guidance itself is available on our website as well as the state's website. Another recent update has been the fact that as the cases of COVID-19 continue to soar and increase, governors from California, Washington, and Oregon all released a travel advisory a few days ago that basically said it's a strongly worded or strongly urging community members to stay local during the holiday season, stay local when it comes to travels to the greatest extent possible. If one does need to travel, there's a recommendation, a strong recommendation, to quarantine for 14 days if you're arriving from another state or country. That information, again, also on our website and the state's website. The state also released a revised face covering guidance. It can be found on our website and the state's website as well, but it very much is in line with what we've all become accustomed to, wearing the face covering, keeping it clean, and remembering all of those efforts that have been part of the safety mitigation efforts. We do continue to see progress being made on a vaccine for COVID-19. Those clinical trials remain active. I'm sure you've seen in the news lately, a couple of companies are having very promising results thus far in the clinical trials, so those remain active. Our staff here at Public Health continue to prepare for a mass vaccination distribution under the leadership of our interim health officer, Dr. Paul Beatty. So those plans have been in preparation for several months and are very much still active, and so we continue to engage in those preparatory efforts. A reminder of our testing site that we do have locally. This testing site, as you know, in early November, it was a joint effort that was engaged in with the state testing site, but the effort was between quality counties and Calaveras counties, and it was for the first part at Calaveras Fairgrounds. It has moved to the Motherlode Fairgrounds in Sonora. Still has the same hour, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's at the Blake Elliott Building. You can go online or call 888-634-1123. You do not need a referral by the doctor. Anybody can go, and of course, as part of the surveillance efforts, we encourage testing and continue to encourage testing. Lastly, I just wanted to remind again, I had mentioned this earlier, but it's very important, particularly as the holiday season approaches, there are a number of community resources. We encourage everyone to visit our website to obtain information about if there's a need, again, for assistance, if there's a need for cash aid, if there's a need for childcare. I mentioned COVID-19 under our Resources tab. We also, and then to close, I just wanted to, again, recognize the efforts of the community, the local residents, the local businesses. Everyone is doing a phenomenal job to come together and do what they can to protect the health and safety of our community, and that does not go unnoticed. This is the reason why I think Calaveras is doing as good of a job as possible, all things considered. Again, we do remain one of the few counties in the less restrictive tiers, and that is due to the tremendous work of our community as a whole. And then also wanted to recognize the incredible Health and Human Services Agency Public Health team. They have worked nonstop on this response, and they are doing a fantastic job, and they are, they're just amazing, and I just wanted to recognize them as well. With that, I will stop and take any questions.
You need to turn your mic. Thank you, Ms. Stranger. I want to thank you for your leadership in Health and Human Services and guidance moving forward and the steps that you've taken. Oh, we're getting a little feedback here. Sorry. That you've taken to work for the best result for Calaveras County, as we actually in the near past have moved to less restrictive tiers. That goes a lot to the work that you've done, along with health and all your employees and public health, top to bottom, so we do appreciate that. There's a couple of things. You did bring up with the holidays and the travel that the governor and the state and Oregon and Washington strongly urged people, and this was a question that came up during the state health update on Friday prior to them finalizing some of these changes going into these next steps. A reporter asked the state health director, you know, why aren't you requiring this? And something the state health director said, enforcement to that degree is a near impossibility. So a strong urging and people being proactive in their own homes and with their community is the best hopeful result. So it's the state taking a step towards an educational approach, and I think, you know, that bears with, personally, my line of thinking is like I can be proactive for my family and everyone else. That's something I'm very receptive to. I talked to you this last week about the adjudication process, a little bit in depth. You know, it's something that the state's kind of taken a step back somewhat from right now, and just for the public, the adjudication process is basically an appeal to moving to a more restrictive tier. It's something that Calaveras took a couple steps, twice did in the past, once unsuccessfully, once successfully, that you went ahead and did prior to the state putting forward a clear path for adjudication process, which, you know, we appreciate you being proactive and doing in the past. My question, moving down this path and with knowing the concern of, you know, the rise last week in just positive cases in Calaveras County, which is concerning regardless of the situation, how many people are currently hospitalized right now because of the COVID situation in our county?
So when I checked earlier with our team on our current hospitalizations, it was, I believe, one individual, and Colleen's on the line if she wants to jump in, and that's part of our snapshot that's also on the line. Of course, those numbers are fluid, Supervisor Stoppa, so I do know that also we had a number of individuals over the weekend who are COVID-positive come into the hospital, but that doesn't mean they were admitted. So the current numbers for admittance is one COVID patient.
Understood. And right. Right. And right now, with, I mean, with our experience over the last year, I can say with our doctors and public health across the country, we've been able to treat COVID to a better degree. So positive cases aren't necessarily resulting in as many hospitalizations moving forward. Am I correct?
So...
Yes and no then.
I'm thinking, you know, one of the things Dr. Galley covered the other day, because he got asked a very similar question, is that the rise in cases don't necessarily mean that COVID hospitalizations happen the next day, right? It's usually there's a lag of two to three weeks. So I would agree that we have, our healthcare system has had a, been able to manage the hospitalizations we have had locally. We haven't needed to surge, and we haven't, we didn't need to in the summer. Again, if we should have to, I covered the efforts that are in place to do so. But again, it's hard to state going forward if that will remain, right? Because we are seeing spikes right now that we haven't experienced in the past, even during the summer, that the rise is higher and quicker. So cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to continue with that same type of ability to manage in our local healthcare system, but that is to come.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. With the lag, and, you know, across the state with the spike right now, he did say on Friday that, you know, the spike hasn't necessarily gone to the hospitals yet and hospitalizations, which could happen very soon. I'm not, you know, I'm not direct on the science or the, let's say, the statistics as they're moving forward, you know, day to day, but, you know, we get a lag behind the supervisors on the reporting. But, you know, as we move forward, I personally, from my point of view, would be supportive of going through the adjudication process, even though the state says they aren't going to necessarily apply it so quickly, but, you know, just over the weekend, you know, they changed everything, and after weeks of them saying, "Look, if you get a spike and you're in a small county, we aren't going to necessarily move you back as quickly," and they had the two-week wait period, and they just changed everything this weekend. And here's my reason for saying this, is the way it's applied by the state hurts small businesses more than anything else. We heard a report from Kathy Galeno that pretty much every business in Calaveras County is considered a small business. When the closures and you go through the tiers, the small businesses are the ones that are hurt the most, and there's no scientific evidence that's been presented to me personally that shows that those small businesses transfer COVID any more than a corporate business such as, I will use some examples, Target, Walmart, and other places, that could stay open and do business as normal throughout any of the tiers. And so the framework for essential business, I think, is not ironed out enough to where it's sustainable for small businesses, and I believe that the adjudication process for Calaveras County is the only one where we can work forward on protecting our small businesses, and it's something I want us to all keep in mind as we move forward. I understand if our hospitals start to fill up, it's definitely disconcerting, the rise in positive cases is disconcerting to me. I don't want anybody to get sick as we move forward, but we need to make sure that we still move forward and consider that, you know, the remedy does not need to be worse, or the cure does not need to be worse than the disease as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, good morning, Kristin. It's kind of interesting, you know, talking about businesses, do the businesses really understand that now it's a 24 hours to comply situation? Is there any way that we're really pushing that out and letting them know that it's immediate, it's not a couple of days from now or whenever?
So we did release a press release yesterday afternoon that communicated that information, but do I think that every business in Calaveras County is aware of this modification? No, I do not, and that's why we're spending a tremendous amount of time today engaging with local partners, as well as reiterating this as part of our Tuesday's press release as well, to get that information out. Again, I think an important part, though, is knowing that the modifications, so businesses can remain open in both the yellow, orange, red, and even purple tiers, right? They can remain open, they just have significant modifications. So in the yellow tier, it was more of an occupancy type of thing, and it remains an occupancy even in the orange tier. So what it means is not as much of a drastic change going from yellow to orange, it's more of a, maybe you were at 50%, now you have to go to 25% of an occupancy. So my point in that is that I think it will be easier for businesses to be able to make those modifications going from yellow to orange than it would be when we ran a different system before, and it was more of an inside-outside-only type of thing, that did require additional time and preparatory efforts. So again, we will continue to do the messaging to the greatest extent possible, but the changes themselves going from yellow to orange are less.
It's kind of interesting, the number of calls I fielded over this last 24 hours looking for the quick link, that it's almost like they forgot about the previous tier and now need to remind themselves about what that tier represented. So even the state, that's a great quick link that's there for people to look at. The hospital said that they have two beds, is what they were telling me yesterday. The other thing is, is that we need to kind of remind everybody how battle-wary your staff is getting and everybody else is getting over this. This has been going on since March. It's a long time to be fighting a fight. Do you have enough contact tracing available to you to keep ahead of this curve?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Mills. Yeah, it has been, it's been a long time. But, you know, the public health team is extremely committed to serving their community, and so this continues to be ever the top priority, as it has since the onset, but thank you for recognizing that. So what we are in the process of doing is, we do have, many of our team members, the bulk of their job is contact tracing, contact investigation, that type of work. We have engaged with some of the state funding that we received, the CARES funding, to go ahead and hire, extra hire employees, to basically start to transition some of that ongoing contact tracing and investigation work. That's part of, actually, the board item you have before you today, a little bit later, is to receive that funding, and a lot, substantial portion of that money will be going to providing the staffing for extra hire and a couple limited-term positions of what you saw, I believe it was last meeting and approved, to basically transition that work so that the team members who are part of public health can start to go back into their traditional programs a little bit more, while also still being engaged, so having that exchange of learning.
Thank you. I know in one of the discussions, something about the potential for regionalization with 94% of the population plus in California currently in purple. That's a pretty amazing number. Is regionalization something the governor is considering discussing, because with what's happened in especially Amador County and now in Tuolumne County, how does that affect us?
So the concept of regionalization and the assignment of tiers to a region is definitely something that's being considered. There's a lot of things that are being considered to try to address the surge, but I can say at this current time, we are remaining with the current process, which is utilizing the existing blueprint for a safer economy framework and having that be county by county.
So it's important that the counties understand they have a role to play here, and it is local, whether they like it or not, and to some degree, we've somehow managed to keep ourselves above the water, so to speak, in relation to the rest of the state. I also heard something about a statewide curfew was being considered. Is that still in the works, or are they still talking about it? What's the situation with that?
Yes, actually, the governor did address this yesterday during his noon press conference as well. A statewide curfew is being considered still. It has not been a decision that has been made. I know that they are, the state is looking at the results and the data supporting concepts of curfews decreasing disease spread from other areas, from other countries, from other states, other communities, but at this current time, there is not a curfew in place, but it is something that is being considered.
Has he discussed how he's going to enforce it if it happens?
There wasn't conversation about enforcement that was shared on a statewide level. I can tell you, going back to some of his earlier messages about the concept of enforcement, and it's kind of going back to what Supervisor Stoppa was saying earlier, is that there's really much more of a desire for individuals to voluntarily comply, right? We're such a large state, it's just, it would be physically impossible to enforce every single thing. So it really is about asking our citizens to do their part as part of the response efforts. So that's my comment to that.
A lot of our businesses have brought in inventory in anticipation of the holiday season. It's when they, in essence, that's what Black Friday's about, it's when your books finally go black and you start making money. If they're, in essence, shut down or locked down and unable to make use of that inventory, that's going to create another dilemma for them, because they're going to be subject to inventory tax and on inventory they can't sell. So there's a whole situation where Walmart and Kmart and all the other marts are going to be able to be open and be able to make full use of their inventory. I would like to be sure that our businesses aren't, again, negatively impacted, because if we give them money, that solves a short-term problem, it doesn't solve the long-term problem for them. So I'd also like to remind everybody about Calaveras Connect, and that is the use of that for delivery of food, food supplies to people who are shut in or are subject to the lockdowns. So always keep in mind that Calaveras Connect is an available resource for getting food from our local supermarkets. And thank you so much for your responses.
Thank you, Supervisor Mills. I did want to just add one thing as you were speaking, the point you made prior to the Calaveras Connect point about businesses. I think it's important for the community to recognize, particularly this movement from the yellow to the orange, we are not talking about shutdowns, we are talking about modifications, significant modifications, but modifications nonetheless, many of which we've become quite familiar with by this point. So it's things like reducing occupancy, for the most part, but for, in the orange tier, there's still a significant amount of indoor operations that are allowed to continue. But again, it is with those occupancy measures in place. So I say that only to, the point about inventory, not lost on me by any means, but I did want to point out that the businesses still will be able to operate just with those modifications.
Kristin, real quick, last thing too, is that that would mean that the governor doesn't change us suddenly and tell us in 24 hours, we're moving to a more restrictive tier. That could potentially happen too. So we cannot, we cannot simply say, because we're here at this point in time, that suddenly everything is going to be good going through the Christmas. I don't want us to have a dark Christmas in Calaveras County. That's my concern. Okay, thanks.
And you can always wear your mask, Mr. Mills. Mr. Guaramendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Kristin, very much. My primary question was about enforcement, which I think Supervisor Mills and Ms. Stranger already went through, but I really want to just echo the comments of Supervisor Stoppa and Supervisor Mills, and really thanking your staff for the work that you guys are doing. You have been working at this nonstop for eight months. People have to be exhausted. Every day you get a new set of cards dealt to you that you have to adjust to, so I appreciate it, and I also thank the residents of Calaveras, because it's their efforts that are keeping us in the lower tier, and we're looking pretty good. But as I think Supervisor Mills was alluding to, there is a wave coming over the state, and we are here today, but we may not be here tomorrow, because these things are going to change, and it will catch up to us, and we need to be prepared for it. You know, to the business side, you know, we've seen some really interesting innovations. I know I got my farmer's market box delivered from Calaveras grown, just all local stuff, to our local library for distribution, and I think that our businesses are finding ways to innovate so they don't go dark.
Yes, they have.
And so I'm very proud of our businesses as well for what they're trying to do. I also want to just give a shout out that something, it's small, but I think it's really innovative that our county is doing, is really our success in Project Room Key. I mean, this is a project that we could have just stamped, got people housed and moved them out, but instead, your staff, Kristin, really did the extra and are solving these problems for a long term, putting people in treatment, dealing with people, dealing with the underlying issues of homelessness, at the same time as dealing with COVID, is just really impressive, and I appreciate the fact that it's our county employees that are doing this extra work and moving these people forward, so we're not just in stasis. So I'm sure that when the governor tells us what our responsibilities are for enforcement, you'll let us know. I just really want to compliment you and your staff and the citizens of Calaveras for getting us this far, and knowing that it's going to be, we have a difficult road ahead of us, but at least there is a light somewhere down the road. Hopefully, it's not a freight train, but...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristin.
Mr. Tofanelli?
Yes, Kristin, thank you very much. Thank you to your staff, and I echo everything that's been said here. I think you guys are doing a great job. You specifically, and Supervisor Mills bringing up, it must be taxing on you guys. It's nonstop since March, it just continues, continues, and now it's going back and more and more. But I do want to bring up and ask you, all the things that you said, one thing that was not brought up, and you continue to hear about it, is we are heading into flu season. Not only do we have this pandemic resurging towards us, we are headed to flu season, and it's going to be a double whammy here going forward. And so my question to you is, a lot of places out there right now, CVS and in other areas and other places, I think even Safeway, you can get free flu shots. Do we have on the books anything planned for another free flu shot clinic here at the county going forward to try and get a handle on some of this? It's very important that people get inoculated here for the flu, because this, again, this could be double whack, not only COVID shutting us down, but people getting the flu and passing it on, because you think of the flu, a lot of people still go to work, some of them get really sick, but we could be facing going into Christmas, as Supervisor Mills pointed out, not only just the pandemic, but being hit with the flu very seriously and hard if we don't get people to get flu shots. And then one other question to go along with that, I've seen, like everybody else has in the news, that the inoculations for, or the vaccines for COVID, I think the recent one I saw, they had a 94.5% success rate, but I did not see whether this, that they're projecting this vaccinating, is it like a flu shot where it's yearly, or is it just one-time shot to cover this 19? Or do they keep on yearly, like the flu, going through it and updating it, and the current strains that will be current during the next year and updating it, and so you not only have to get a flu shot, but now you need a COVID shot yearly?
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Tofanelli. I can take those questions one at a time. So first off, thank you for the recognition on the impacts for the flu season, as well as the COVID pandemic, and how that has the ability to exacerbate an already difficult situation. So yes, the concept of getting a flu shot now is extremely important. I can tell you that when we did do our flu clinic in collaboration with the hospital, we had a significant amount of community members who did come out for that drive-through flu clinic. We distributed over 400 vaccine that we received from the state. We do not have any plans to do another flu drive-through clinic. The main reasons behind that is staff capacity, it's a tremendous amount of work, as well as, we actually don't have any additional flu vaccine for the health department at the current time. We are working to get more, but we don't have it. That being said, individual community members can obtain the flu vaccine from their local healthcare providers, from the local pharmacies, like you were just explaining, so we would encourage community members who didn't have the ability to get their annual flu shot during that, during our clinic, to engage in those avenues. And if we are able to do something more, again, this is, like I said, staff capacity is a huge concern right now, we would make that known to the public. The other part that you asked was about the, oh, excuse me, the vaccine itself. So, and Colleen's on the line, so she can jump in with further information, but the, right now, it's anticipated that it will be a two-time vaccination, that should be 28 days apart. Colleen, did you want to weigh in with any additional information, or about annually or anything?
Hi, this is Colleen Rodriguez, Deputy Director of Public Health. So there's still a lot... a lot of things about the vaccination that are up in the air. What we do know is that there are currently possibly two companies that we may get vaccine from. And when I say everything is up in the air, it's even down to the storage. There's some storage challenges, which we are addressing directly, and there are going to be limited numbers to start off with as far as the number of vaccines that are given. So we are, as Kristin had said, we are currently and have been for quite a while, are actively planning for when the vaccine is given to us by the state. The information that I have right now, and again, it could change, is that the vaccine would be given to, as I said, in tiers. So first responders, medical providers would be at the top tier, but any vaccine, any dose that we were given, you have to cut it in half because two vaccinations have to be given to each person. Beyond that, I don't have any additional information as to whether or not it will need to be done annually, if it will be modified. I think that everyone is trying to work out all of those details, and those will be forthcoming. But as of right now, if, let's say, we're given 100 vaccine, that actually can, if we're giving 100, you have to cut it in half because everyone gets two, so we would only get 50. So still more to come, and as we learn more from the state as that process unfolds, I will definitely let Kristin know, and she can let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you.
She, no, done? Okay. I have, Ms. Stranger, I have two questions. On hospitalization, on the one, is that for Mark Twain Hospital only, or does that include Kaiser, Adventist, so forth?
Thank you, Supervisor Callaway. So whenever we give data about local hospitalizations, we're referring only to our local hospital. So we are not including information about hospitals in other counties. So yes, the answer is that it does include Mark Twain Medical Center.
So we know that people in this county also go to Adventist and Kaiser and wherever else. Okay, so that's only for Mark Twain?
It is.
Is there a way for you to know if we have any hospitalization in other hospitals?
You know, I'm trying to think of a way. I think the answer is no, because individuals are, no, not I think, I know, individuals are, you know, seeking medical care from whatever avenue, and it's not like we are notified at the health department, oh, somebody is in a hospital in Bakersfield, for example, with COVID and they're a Calaveras resident. That's not how the process works. Where we do receive information is when we have a COVID-positive individual. Regardless of where they are, those tests as part of the process do come back to us. So we do not have the ability to know when our residents are hospitalized in other hospitals. However, we do have the ability to know when our residents are hospitalized in other hospitals and are COVID-positive, that data does eventually make its way back to us as part of our case.
Okay, thank you. I want to go back to where the cases are. When you said half of them are within the county, you said healthcare, household, and I thought I heard you say workplace as the third one. What does healthcare, what does that mean? Does that mean somebody went to the hospital and got it in the hospital, or a healthcare worker got it? And then there's social gatherings. Is that part of household, or is that just mom, dad, kids?
Okay, so I'll take those in parts. In terms of healthcare settings, I think the answer is yes, 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 to everything you just said. As you know, and was widely reported, we had a significant number of COVID positives associated with our Avalon facility. That outbreak has been considered closed by our local health officer. A number of efforts were drawn into that, but that contributed a significant portion. Also, that could come in the place of work settings for individuals who are working locally in healthcare facilities, as well as maybe even outside of the county. So the concept of healthcare facilities is a little bit more broad. The concept of households, yes, it's a lot of family members, right, because you're living in close proximity. Those do come as a result of gatherings, you know, because at some point, somebody had to have contracted COVID. So yes, we are seeing the social type of engaging being a reason that we are having COVID-positive cases. And then, yes, workplaces is another one, as I mentioned. We have not had, and again, this is recognition of the businesses, a significant number of large-scale outbreaks in workplace settings. I think that due in large part to the partnerships that were put into place right out the gate, where PPE was made available through a collaboration with economic development, as well as the local Chamber of Commerce, and so that type of PPE was put into place earlier on through our Emergency Operations Center. There was a significant amount of state resources for PPE that were brought in and disseminated to local healthcare providers. So, you know, while we experienced the shortages of those preventative measures, we probably didn't experience them to the degree that other communities did, where you hear on the news about people not having any access. We have really great relationships in this county, and so those types of efforts that were prioritized right off the onset, I think, is what's made the, not seeing these huge outbreaks in a workplace setting. It's just not occurring.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Are there any public comments on this item?
Terry McBride, District Two. I sure would love that timer put back on like it used to be. It's a nice, you know, it's respectful to your constituents to do that. I have here your Oaths of Office, every single one, and that includes the Public Health Officer and Director and everything else. Which states, I, your name, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge your duties upon which I'm about to enter. This is the Fourteenth Amendment. I highly recommend every single one of you go home and read the Constitution. Fourteenth Amendment, all persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States or of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law, I would include mandates, which shall bridge the privilege or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property, kind of sounds like what you're doing right now, without the process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction equal protection of the laws. That's powerful, isn't it? Well, now I want you to listen, and you should look up Section Three. No person shall be a senator or representative in Congress or elector of president and vice president or hold any office, civil or military, under the United States or under any state, that would include county, who, having previously taken an oath as a member of Congress or an officer of the United States or as a member of any state legislator or any, or as an executive or judicial officer of any state, that includes county, to support the Constitution of the United States shall be engaged in insurrection or rebellion against the same or given aid or comfort to enemies thereof, but Congress may vote by two-thirds of each House. Do you know that you lose a lot of your civil liberties when, in a power position that you guys have, you're walking all over people's constitutional rights? The great Gavin Newsom, the dictator, and his Gestapo known as the public health, the numbers aren't there. I have people I know personally who went in for a surgical procedure and were called COVID. They didn't get a bill. They contacted the hospital. How come, oh, well, you were COVID. No, it wasn't. It had surgery. Oh, the government pays the bill, so we just do it as COVID. This is someone I know personally, and I've heard about this too many times. Flu season comes every year. This is no worse than the flu. We've lost less people due to the flu. You guys, including the public health, get a paycheck. You're not working at 25% capacity now, are you? How in the hell do you expect any business in this county to survive at 25% capacity? Honest to goodness, you guys, do you look in the mirror? Do you look at your constituents? I don't think you do anymore. I think you've forgotten who you are. You run in fear from this crap. Gain a spine. Stand up. Tell them we want proof. We want to see numbers, and he has no money. Hundred billion in the red, guys.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Does anyone else have something they'd like to address on this item? Is there anyone on the line?
There is not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to move to, thank you, Ms. Stranger. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to move to public comments. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda and under the jurisdiction of the board?
Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator of New California State. Which is happening sooner than you think. Again, I put myself out to you that you may reach out to me at any time to discuss the situation. I highly recommend that you look at our website and start figuring out what's going on. As usual, I've already stated that California is in violation of Constitution, Article Four, Section Four, Article Six, the First Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment, as I just explained to you. Order of the day, the Constitution will not wait. We, the people of the unified counties of New California, seek the removal of the California State Governor. Did you see what the judge did to him? Isn't it interesting, the timing of all of this? We are determined to stop the one-man rule of a post-nominous Craven dictator, whose words and actions are a grave danger to all of U.S. citizens living in California. On October 4, 2020, in Sutter County Superior Court, a trial took place to determine if the Craven dictator governor of California could continue to be a Craven dictator or forced to comply with the U.S. and California constitutions. In the court's ruling, today, the county, the court confirmed that Governor Newsom does not rule California and that we are still a nation of laws. California has not been well-served by a one-man rule. A return to representative government will be best for public health and the economy. The governor must accept this ruling as a fundamental principle of our democracy and govern himself accordingly. Recently, the Craven dictator governor of California reacted to the court's ruling against him in the Gallagher-Kylie versus Newsom case. We strongly disagree with specific limitations really places on the exercise of the governor's emergency authority. Assemblyman Kevin Kylie, writing in his blog, stated, "He can see that this is the end of this one-man rule. That's because, simply put, Judge Heckman's ruling is a home run." In a thorough and well-reasoned opinion, she agreed with us on every issue. Newsom tried to get out of the case on a technicality, arguing that it was moot, but Judge Heckman held it was not for two distinct reasons. Newsom argued that the Emergency Services Act transformed California into an autocracy and places all powers with the state in his hands. Does that not terrify you? It does me. But Judge Heckman held that its claim meeting does not give the governor the power to legislate. Newsom argued against any restraints on his future conduct, but Judge Heckman found good cause for a permanent injunction because it is reasonably probable that the governor will continue in issuing executive orders violating the California Constitution. This sounds familiar. Newsom argued the ruling should be put on hold while he appealed, but Judge Heckman has not done that. So what is the effect of the ruling? Well, let's start with the obvious. I'm sure I don't have enough time because I don't have a timer. First, it's what the L.A. Times calls a rebuke, including, I would say, the supervisors that follow his ridiculous orders, Governor Newsom. The judge found that several, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Are there any other public comments?
There are not.
None. All right, thank you. I want to move to the consent agenda. These items are normally routine, non-controversial. An item may be pulled by board staff or public. Does any board member wish to pull a consent agenda item?
Item number five, Madam Chair.
Ms. Glanville?
Yes, and I would like to pull item number four as well.
Okay. Are there any staff who wish to pull an item?
There is not, Madam Chair.
Or public?
There is not.
Okay.
Chair, be it known that I did not pull an item.
I did. I was looking at you, Mr. Mills. I did. Let the record note, Mr. Mills did not pull a consent agenda item.
He's building up for later.
Oh, gosh.
Madam Chair, I will move the remainder of the items.
Thank you. A motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
By Supervisor Stoppard. All in favor?
Aye.
I, let the record show, it was a five-zero vote of the board. Item four and five, I think we need to take them consecutively, though. Mr. Stoppard, did you want to make a comment on five?
Number five, I just want to bring up item number 15. Here it says, let me make sure I get the word right. Supervisor Gervini asked to move the item to a future board meeting date to allow the schools to provide input. Supervisor Toffanelli also stated the fire districts may want to provide input as well. I just want to clarify that Mr. Gueramendi during that meeting brought up special districts and anybody else affected, so I would just would like that added to the list so that it's not just fire and school districts, because the list goes on. That's all.
Supervisor Stoppard, is it, I'm sorry, I didn't read the minutes on this item. It's a good catch. But did we, is it indicated in there that we directed, Ms. Davis offered to reach out to these organizations?
Yes, but it only states that the fire and the school districts, and you did, you did bring up special districts and anybody else affected during that time, so I just wanted to clarify on that.
Good call.
Since you have that item up, could we do a word correction as well?
Maybe. What?
After, it says, Leslie Davis clarified, she's asking the board to increase, change the word to allow rather than all low.
All, very good.
I was going to pull it, but I figured, okay.
Ms. Glanville, did you get that? Thank you. And would you like to comment on item four, please?
Yes, the minutes reflected for item number three, the report out should be amended to board action, a motion by Supervisor Stoppard with a second by Supervisor Mills. The board voted four to one to intervene in existing litigation with Supervisor Callaway in the negative. Previously, the Supervisor Callaway in the negative was not in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Very good clarification.
Yes.
Okay, so we have items four and five with the amendments. May I have a motion?
So we have any public comment?
Pardon, a motion, pardon? Oh, thank you. Are there any public comments on items four and five?
There are not, Madam Chair.
Okay. A motion by Supervisor Mills and a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
By Supervisor Stoppard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a five-zero vote of the board. Thank you. Okay, I want to move to the regular agenda. Item, did any of you need to take a break for any reason? Mr. Mills?
Yeah.
How much time?
Five minutes.
We're going to take
You want 10? 10?
10. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Okay, thank you. I want to reconvene the meeting and move to item 10. This is a Planning Department item. It's a study session on industrial hemp cultivation in the county and provide staffs asking direction regarding an ordinance prohibiting or regulating hemp cultivation or any permutation thereof. Mr. Mauer, did you want to start the discussion, please?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So a little less than two years ago, the county adopted an urgency moratorium on the cultivation of hemp. I think the staff report outlines the reasons why we did that. The urgency ordinance will expire at the end of, or end of the two-year term, which is about the middle of February, and so we need to decide how to move forward on this. I think the best way to handle this discussion would be for me to sort of go through, you know, briefly some of the issues that we're facing, board. of the issues that we're facing. Board, you know, can ask questions of us, let the public weigh in, and then go back to, you know, making some, giving us some direction, you know, depending on whether or not the Board wants to enact a permanent moratorium or regulate, you know, that will lead us down the discussion of the number of questions that we have. And if that's workable for you, Madam Chair, then I'll just sort of go through some of the issues that we're looking at.
That's fine, Mr. Mauer.
Okay, thank you. So, the big question really is whether or not to make the moratorium, the prohibition on hemp cultivation, permanent or not, and if we decide to allow hemp cultivation in the county, then what format should we regulate it? The issues associated with hemp are primarily similar to those that we faced with cannabis cultivation, you know, primarily the issue of odors, adjacent, odors that affect adjacent residences. But there are also some concerns about, now that we have a regulated cannabis industry, how hemp affects that. I am not enough of an expert to know how, how that might affect us, and I'm hoping that there are members of the industry or people with more knowledge than I on that issue that can address that. But I know that that was an issue that we were faced with two years ago. Another issue, and I'm glad to see that the sheriff is, is available to discuss this issue, is the potential for cannabis to be cultivated under the guise of industrial hemp. The plants are more or less the same plant. There's different strain, and the difference between hemp and cannabis is the amount of THC, the psychoactive compound that's in the plant. And if it's less than 0.3%, then it's considered hemp. If it's over that, then it's cannabis. But without doing testing of the plant itself, there's no way to tell in the field whether or not it's, it's actually hemp or cannabis. Hemp is cultivated for, you know, three purposes. The hemp fibers that, you know, you can make clothing or other fabrics from, the CBD, the medicinal product can be derived from hemp, as well as hemp oil from the seeds. And so, you know, the question really is, is whether or not that is a viable industry in this county, and if so, do we want to, to regulate it? You know, the options between a complete ban or regulation would just be to do nothing, in which case the state rules would apply. Currently, anyone who wants to cultivate can by simply registering with the ag commissioner and following whatever state rules there are along those lines. And so I think that it's, you know, important that we make a decision here on how we want to, to handle this. I think, to be frank, most of the staff that we've talked about would prefer to keep the, the ban in place. I'm not aware of a strong demand for hemp production in the county, but that really is a decision that the Board needs to make. The other concern that we have is because of the timeframe with the current moratorium expiring in March, if we do decide to regulate, we are going to have to do some environmental analysis under SEQA, and that may not give us enough time to come up with a comprehensive regulatory program before the expiration. If it's the desire of the Board to create a regulatory framework, then it may be appropriate to adopt a ban with the understanding that that would be in place until we develop a regulatory program. I think I will leave it at that for the moment. If the Board members have questions, there's a number of staff available to respond to those. We've got Greg Wayland from the Cannabis Control Program, Mike Boitano from the Ag Department, County Council, the sheriff are all available to answer your questions.
Okay, there are any, Mr. Mills?
Yes, a question would be, if you're talking about March of next year, is there any way to extend the current moratorium?
Not without adopting a permanent ordinance.
Okay, so there is a time limit involved here?
Yes. With an urgency ordinance, it's first effective for a period of 45 days. It can be extended twice up to a total of two years. So March 19th is our deadline.
But if we move to, say, prohibiting, that's going to require some staff time to put together the language for that, or we move to developing regulations, that's probably going to require even more staff time because there's nuances.
Right. We will need to walk through an ordinance, and if it's contained within the zoning code, it needs to go to the Planning Commission and the Board, but we do have time to do a prohibition. It would be quite a bit more work to come up with a regulatory program, and that's, that's, schedule's very tight to accomplish that.
So if you came up with a regu, or the Board agreed to a regulatory program and you came up, how long would it take for you to think, and as far as a window of time?
You know, the crafting of the ordinance, while tight, we could probably do within that timeframe. The concern is the public notice and review period for any SEQA document that we would need to do and any kind of analysis we would need to do under SEQA.
So you're, the 90 days, basically was what you'd be looking at is about a 90-day window?
Right.
And you don't really have time to move through that process in less time than that? You just, it's not going to be able to be done?
It's just not possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Stopper?
Good, good points, Mr. Mills. You know, I've done some research on this across the state and across the West Coast. Right now, to the industrial end, you know, let's take the CBD medical end out of it, there, there's no production plant in service for industrial hemp on the West Coast, to the best of my knowledge. You know, studying on a lot of these crops where they, they have been allowed, hemp has not, the crops aren't selling because there's an overload on product and not enough places for them to go. You know, I, I got a report here, it's a little bit dated, but I mean, it gives the amount of acreage in every county that, that's allowed it across the state. And, you know, just for example, Kern County has over 6,462 acres of hemp, and I could go through multiple other ones. One county that would be somewhat like us, Lake County, had originally put forward a, a more open hemp ordinance when we went into our moratorium, and it became a problem to the point where they, they scaled back. There's the issue of us also putting in staff time and going out and regulating this hemp. First of all, we don't have the labs inside Calaveras County to touch, test for THC level, and it's, it would be a staff problem and time to go out and regulate this, and there's no return. Let me ask you this question. Does Measure G allow us to tax on this, on this agriculture product? Supervisor Stopper, this is Greg Wayland. I just wanted to weigh in on that question briefly. The answer is no. Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Wayland. That's, that's the answer I was looking for. So at this time, it would cost us more to regulate this industry that doesn't necessarily have the opportunity to produce an industrial product with, with no return in Calaveras County. At the same time, we're entering a new cannabis program that we're slowly moving forward on, that, that it could conflict with because what Mr. Mauer brought up in the past, that in the past, it's been seen in other counties where people have, under the guise of hemp, have grown cannabis at the same time, which would potentially circumvent us regulating that and, and it going to the black market. So, at this time, you know, providing that there's nothing presented moving forward, I'm, I'm more in favor of working forward on a moratorium until state and federal guidelines are more established in the future and carrying that moratorium over at this point, providing there's no substantial information offered in this meeting going forward.
Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I, I would like to parallel something which you had referred to, Mr. Stopper, and has to do with the state of Wisconsin and their growing of hemp. And that is, is that at the time of harvest, it has to be tested to determine it is not above that 0.3%. And if it is above it, it's confiscated immediately. So in other words, the, the regulatory agent is stuck with the responsibility of eradicating that entire field of product. That could be quite substantial in its expense because we're now charging our sheriff to dispose of product at our waste site, example, is an example. So there's a lot of unknown variables in how we would control whether or not it truly is a hemp product or whether it, it has some medicinal value or a psychogenic value. So I would support the idea of making a permanent ban until such time as everybody else figures out what's the best way to do it, because I think we'd be running down a financial rabbit hole and a regulatory rabbit hole that no one really thoroughly understands at this point. And, and other states are dealing with the same issue, so it's not like it's just California. It's, it's all over. So-
Yeah, we're, we're on the same page, Mr. Mills. I agree with you 100%.
I just wanted, well-understood the reasoning why I would support a ban at this point.
Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would support ban. Several reasons for that. First is that we, we ask the county of Calaveras citizens to get used to us putting up to, you know, less than 200 acres of cannabis. And I think our communities work to it, growers are working to it. We're finding some success slowly there. I think that when we deal with scale around hemp, you're dealing with just a completely different scale. I mean, we've made a stretch to get up to 200 or less than 200 acres of cannabis being grown. We're talking about 6,000 acres of cannabis in Kern County, according to Supervisor Stopper. We also know it's existing in Kings and Merced, and they have the facilities there to grow crop this stuff. So it's just apples and oranges in many ways. We made a commitment to try to get cannabis industry going in this county, and there's some evidence, I'm sure it can be controversial, as to how hemp will impact cannabis flowers. So I think we try to do really well at what we are doing. And then the final issue, of course, is the law enforcement issue. Right now, we've got two types of grows in our county. We got legal and we got illegal. We throw in a third, it's going to be gray and it's going to confuse everybody, including our law enforcement. So I just assume, let's do what we're doing, let's do it well, and let's do it safe and productively and continue to move forward before we expand. We could take it on again five years, once this whole market figures itself out. That's our amendment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer?
Yes?
You said there would need to be some environmental analysis. What does that mean?
Well, if we were to adopt a regulatory program, we'd have to look at the effects of that and whether or not there would be potential environmental impacts. So we'd need to prepare, you know, some type of environmental document, you know, whether it's a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, or an EIR. It's uncertain at this time. It really depends on the scope of, of a regulatory program. If we were to do a ban, then we could use an exemption for that, and so the timeframe is much quicker.
Even though it's approved by the federal government, we would still, I mean, do we have to do that with other ag products?
We don't, but, you know, as everyone aware, cannabis and hemp are, are different from other ag products. It is considered an ag product by both the state and federal level, but we are also allowed to regulate it as we see fit.
Okay, so under regulation, under the state, if I read the staff report correctly, it would go to the ag commissioner? But if there is additional Calaveras County regulation, we could put it with planning or the cannabis unit or the ag unit? Is that correct?
That's my understanding of how the law would work, yes.
So then, that would be, could be split regulation? Could we say, if we allowed hemp, could we say it's going to all be under the cannabis unit?
We could certainly do that. We'd need to work closely with Greg and his team, as well as the, the Ag Department, because there are, you know, regulations that the Ag Department has to abide by at the state level. But we could also, you know, develop a permitting process that is handled by any department that the, the Board sees fit.
Okay, I thought I remember years ago, Mr. Tuffinelli in your district, somebody wanted to establish, excuse me, a hemp farm. I thought that item came before us years ago. Do you remember that, Mr. Mauer? Okay, that's fine. It's a mute point, anyway. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board before I open it to public comment? Mr. Mills?
What does the sheriff say? I know, I heard he's on the line or available. I would certainly like to hear what his thoughts are.
Good morning, Supervisor Mills. Yes, I am on the line, and I agree with the Board. It needs to be banned. There is financially an issue when it comes to the illegal side because they have a unit that could actually test the stuff in the field to see if it is under that 3%. We do not have that equipment. It's a costly equipment. The, what we call a NIC test would, it's a short-term, it's something that tells you yes or no, but it's not conclusive to decide whether it is actually hemp or whether it is cannabis. And I heard you and Supervisor Stopper talk about the legal side as Supervisor Garamendi. Trying to, to decide whether something is legal or illegal is going to be a, a legal rabbit hole that I don't think we want to go down with having marijuana already in the county. I know the marijuana growers are not going to be happy about it because hemp will kill their plants, so it's going to cause, I think, a legal problem in that aspect for the county if we're allowing hemp to come in. Now, they're not going to want to pay taxes because what we've allowed to grow is killing their crops, so I think that's an issue. But just on the legal side, if we have to go out and eradicate, now we're, we're taking away from what could be a, a legal grow, it's just, it's a nightmare. I think that Supervisor Garamendi had a, a good point. We wait five years, let the state figure out what's going on, let this program that we have in place with the cannabis get up and running before we start adding more problems. So I'm in complete agreement with the Board as far as keeping the ban in place and then reassessing it in five years. I just think that is going to cause a lot of problems for my marijuana team because we're going to have citizens calling and saying, hey, these people are growing marijuana. It's going to take away from investigation on illegal grows and putting it towards what could be a legal hemp grow. I, I just think it's a headache. So my opinion is that we keep it as a banned product at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. If there's no more, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are not on the line.
There are not on the line.
Okay, there's no public comments on the line?
There are.
As a cannabis farmer, I'm definitely against any sort of open, unregulated hemp production in this county. We've worked really hard to develop an ordinance and regulations behind cannabis. And while I hate to put regulations on any industry like we have suffered through and taxes that we have suffered through, I think we need to take time and let cannabis get up and running. We're, have the potential to be a great revenue generator for this county. Hemp permits go for $1,400 total, and we're paying in excess of $12,000 plus our taxes. Additionally, there is the risk of crop damage. And now that we've moved to a square foot tax and not a production tax, we're going to pay that tax regardless. And now you're, if you allow hemp, that hemp's going to destroy our crop that we can't sell, but you're still going to benefit, the county is. So, that's problematic. Really, I just, if we're going to do this, we need to take a really slow approach and look at regulations and protect what's already here. Otherwise, you're not going to have a sustainable industry on either side of that fence. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good morning. Neil McEwen, Murphy's Grade Hemp and Cannabinoids. I can take off the mask while I'm at the, okay, very good. It feels good. Hello. Neil McEwen, Murphy's Grade Hemp and Cannabinoids. And this industry is projected to grow to $26.5 billion in the next five years. We don't want any of that here in Calaveras, do we? County crop production, looking back at the Department of Ag's records on the Calaveras website, show that in 2016, there were $5.5 million worth of cattle sold, which grew to 7.2 million in 2017. And timber grew from 4.8 million in 2016 to 7.3 million. Those are millions, very small numbers. And that is total revenue. How much do they contribute to this county's budget through their taxes comparative to cannabis farmers, which I am one as well? And these are very easy problems to overcome with regulation. First of all, this is this beautiful CBD growing region. What we can do is simply certify the seed. It has to be feminized seed, approved by the head of the ag department. That's simple. You can have certified dispensaries of seed and clone that are female and respectfully, Sheriff, will not kill plants. Only males pollinate females. If you have feminized seed stock, there is no opportunity for that. And the sheriff is correct. There are onsite, in the field, testing equipment already. Eurofins, which is an international company, they have their quality trait analysis program. It costs $40,000. They'll hold your hand. It has a ton of software associated with it. Orange Photonics has their machine, which has accuracy down to 0.05 percent, which is 10 times greater the accuracy required to detect the 0.3 percent. And those only cost $13,000. They can be carried in a simple orange suitcase that it comes in. And the, I'm sure that there are people that would like to grow CBD out there. And having to wait five years while the rest of the market grows to $26.5 billion seems like a really large missed opportunity here. But maybe, are we on five minutes? Can I keep going? I'm kidding. That's pretty much all I have.
Now, I have one question, considering, I know you know the hemp side of it, as well as the, are you saying that you do or do not support hemp farms in Calaveras?
I do support regulated hemp farms.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other public comments?
There are not.
Okay, I want to bring it back to the board. I support a permanent moratorium for the reasons that Supervisor Guaramendi said. We have committed to an industry, and we need to see how all that plays out. I'm not as concerned about where the federal government or the state government goes. I'm concerned about the compatibility of the marijuana cannabis versus the hemp cannabis. And so, that's sort of where I'm coming from. It was really hard to say, well, let's outlaw product, because the libertarian part of me says, you know, we don't like to. And I was just going through my head as you all are talking about, well, gee, do we outlaw colorful bookstores? And I thought, no, I think we have a code that allows colorful bookstores in certain areas or a strip joint or what have you. So...
Colorful bookstore, she meant. Whoa!
Now, I know what she meant. Colorful bookstores.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I just, you know, it's like, I really sort of had a problem with this, and I did talk to some people over the weekend, as I'm sure some of you did. And it was, are there any mitigating measures that we could apply to, so we could allow this ag product? And at this point in time, there is no mitigating measures that we could apply that would be workable for Calaveras County. So, and until that, whether it's five years, 10 years, three years, the board at that time can make the decision to bring that, to bring this item back, if it so chooses. But I, so that's why I am supporting a permanent moratorium. But, Mr. Tuffinelli?
But, Mr. Tuffinelli?
No, go ahead. Do you have lights on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Neil, I appreciate everything you brought forward and your research and knowing how to test this product and what's going on with it. I really do appreciate that and the other comments that were made. The situation I see right now, and it's not because of staff's fault or anybody else's fault, is that we simply don't have the time to put together a regulatory program right now. Look how long it took us to put together a regulatory program for the cannabis industry that we have now. We only have till March, it says here, March 12. Peter says something about mid-February, but according to this, it's March 12. And then we have to go through the public comment and the SEQA process and the whole thing. There's just no, the timeframe, just simply putting something together for regulatory industry side of it, I just can't see it happening before that time. And there are a number of questions and good points that were brought up by Stopper, Supervisor Stopper, Supervisor Guaramendi, and Supervisor Mills about this. So, I will be the fifth vote on this in voting for a moratorium to a further date, whether it's five years, whatever. It comes back to the board when the state gets their act together and we know more about what's going on with the industry and what's going on with our, I guess at this point, it's still infancy on our cannabis regulations. So, that's my reason for voting for a moratorium.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is an informational item.
That's correct. It's no vote. Yeah, thanks, just giving direction to staff. We've all given Mr. Stopper, do you have anything?
No, I just want to thank Neil also for bringing up this information. There's a few other, you know, when I weighed out, you know, the positives and negatives, I mean, there's a simulation of some toxic products in the ground that hemp does mitigate also. And then I had to look at the water side and the potential for thousands of acres of a product that would be irrigated, would have a more substantial impact on our water issues. So, I, you know, just thankful for all the research and what everyone has brought up here today, because I think we've really pretty much beat this into the ground already, and I'm in full agreement with the rest of the supervisors here.
Mr. Guaramendi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear, since we're giving direction to staff, my position would be like yours, just permanent ban. I said five years, but we could take up anything that's banned at any time that we so choose, as the board.
Correct.
So, I wouldn't put a timeline on that.
Agreed.
If in three years, five years, 10 years, this is something we want to take, this board can do that, but I wouldn't put it in the statute.
I agree.
I would agree too.
So, there's no further comments from the board? Mr. Mauer?
I think we have our marching orders.
The marching orders are, we would like a permanent ban ordinance at this time. Thank you.
We will bring that back to you before the, we would need to bring it back by the 10th of February, because any ordinance takes 30 days to become effective. We want to make sure it becomes effective before the moratorium expires.
And there is no timeframe, that's...
There'd be no timeframe, correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you.
All right, I want to move to Item 11, Discussion Regarding Strategic Planning For The County. Mr. Alt, C.A.O. Alt, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I have provided a copy of the presentation that I'm going to try to share a screen on and make publicly viewable. Can you see that in the boardroom?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and members of the public who are watching today. I just want to cover real quickly, we're not here today to talk about the whole process of strategic planning. As I understood, the board's direction in October, the October meeting was just for us to more or less take a bit of an inventory about where we're at and what the interest of the board is in moving forward, whether or not we would continue these discussions in the December study session, and most importantly, how these discussions may help inform the process of the board's annual goal setting coming into the new calendar year. So, with that, we have a few talking points that I'll touch on pretty quick. Again, I will be brief, so that we can leave the opportunity for the board to have the discussion, rather than, you know, my facilitation. But I'll cover really quickly what strategic planning is, not so much for the board's edification, but so that our public can understand what the reason would be behind our efforts. I'll talk a little bit about what our approach has been to this point, some benefits and challenges to putting effort towards strategic planning, and some examples of what some of our other colleague counties are doing. We'll discuss a little bit what's already been done in our county, and then with the board's direction or discussion, I hope to have direction on how we'll move forward in the coming months. So, strategic planning, for me, a picture is worth a thousand words. And so, we know that we have opportunity to hire amazing people in our county. We're lucky to have the people that we do that are strong in their subject matter expertise. We hire them, we bring them onboard, and we toss them into their specific job roles, and our employees do a great job of jumping in and doing amazing work. I show you this one picture here, because what's most important about this is when we hire our best employees and we don't have thoughtful direction on where we're going as an organization, we take those employees and toss them into the boat, and we ask them to paddle as fast as they can. In this particular picture, we see a group of people paddling in unison, paddling in the right direction, and working very closely as a team regardless of where their position happens to be in the boat. And so, while I don't mean to be overly critical about where we're at in our development, we have a lot of people in the boat, and we have a lot of people that are trying hard to paddle in a direction, but we're not always paddling in the same direction as we need to be in the absence of a strategic plan. So, what is our plan? What is a strategic plan? Again, I'll just touch on this briefly, and we can come back and discuss any one of these slides at any point in time. Really, the strategic plan is intended to be, at the board's discretion, a multi-year plan that guides the organization's direction and our development. These really, as you'll see by the other examples from the counties, are high-level organizational strategies that ultimately help us define what it is, the work that we will do to meet the expectations of the board and provide outcomes that are tangible to our public. And it also helps us really align our resources to what the priorities of the board are. We know that we may be coming into a time of constrained resources, so it's always important for us to be able to identify what we value, and we fund what we value. And it's also equally as important in the future to know if we do have the benefit of additional resources, where those will be focused to help serve the county in the long term, not just on an annual, year-to-year basis. A strategic plan also helps quite effectively communicate to all of our employees the direction that the board is intended for the county to go, and also for our citizens to know what the board's intention for the future of the county government is. We've done some of these efforts in the planning process, but real quickly, I will touch on what the planning process is. Mission, vision, values is very consistent in all strategic plans, whether it's public or private sector. And below the mission, vision, and values, once identified, then next comes strategic focus areas. They may be called strategic goals. Sometimes the terminology is different in different organizations. But then ultimately, those are reduced down to annual goals and objectives, and that's how we, the staff, would operationalize the plan of the board on how to move the county forward over the multi-year plan. And then last, some piece, last piece of strategic planning process is that there's some measure of accountability that I and the department heads and the people who do the work of the county are able to emphasize, evidence to the board and to our public that we're actually meeting the goals and that we're moving the county in the direction that the board chooses is appropriate for our local government. Really quickly, in a pictorial view, I don't want to hover on this one all that much, but we already talked about mission, vision, values, which has been done in this county, but they sit quietly on a shelf right now. We really haven't put them into action since that effort was done. Then, of course, strategic goals, as I talked about, and then operational goals. And what's important about the operational goals is, this is really where we reside. This is really where we reside in our planning for the county. We focus right now on annual operational goals, and the board has done a nice job, frankly, in identifying very important things, such as the general plan, the cannabis ordinance that's been talked about already this morning, the old jail demolition. Those are very important annual goals and things that were built into the board's priorities. And ultimately, by virtue of good thinking of the board, those have served the strategic purpose of the county and our citizens, but hasn't really intentionally tied to where we want the county to be long term, or at least we can't articulate that through our The benefits to strategic planning is, it gives us, the administration and the department heads, an opportunity to be proactive rather than reactive. We have an opportunity to lay out effective plans to meet the board's objectives and be able to show tangible evidence that we're meeting the direction of the board. Strategic plans also help quite effectively communicate the sense of purpose to our employees... Strategic plans also help quite effectively communicate the sense of purpose to our employees. So, rather than employees just clocking in and clocking out and banging away on their keyboards and doing work of the county, they know what the purpose of that work is and why and how they're contributing to the greater good of our local government. And then last, we've already talked about, really helps us identify what our resource allocation and where resources should be focused. As we all know, we don't have the money in any local government to be able to do all the things that we'd like to, but we do have the money to do the most important things that we need to do. There's always challenges. We've seen in the course of the last year, obviously with the COVID issues, the pace of change that we're experiencing is breakneck speed, and so that always causes concern in strategic planning that anything that we do now for the next three to five years might not take into account the next COVID or other type of issue that would come into play, and that's a legitimate concern. COVID also falls in the category of the unknowns. We certainly didn't know that was coming and didn't have opportunity to prepare for it. We don't know when there might be a significant financial downturn or when some sort of bubble in the economy may affect us negatively. And then the last piece is just the workload and time. We've talked about it, not only today, did we talk about it with public health, I've talked to the board about it. We have primary jobs in doing the work of the county. We also have priorities that are, that we're in the process of fulfilling, and sometimes strategic planning takes on a life of its own where it uses a lot of workload and time that we may not necessarily have to devote to the effort immediately. So, I want to give some examples of what other counties do. These aren't particular ones that I targeted. I tried to pull examples of some very small counties. I often hear that strategic planning is for either companies or organizations or public entities that have rather large budgets and have the money to do this. So, I pulled an example from Mono County and Mariposa County, two relatively larger counties, certainly not the biggest in our state, but Yolo County and Sutter County. I know that this board and our department heads have had opportunity to look at Yolo County as an example. Kudos to their CAO and their board and their administration. They're a textbook example of how strategic planning is not only done but implemented. So, we'll take a quick look at that. Their sister county in Sutter County as well. I won't show quick examples, but it's pretty easy to find other counties that have done similar planning up and down the state from San Diego, Napa, Los Angeles. And if, as we move forward in our discussion in future months, we want to look at a little bit more in depth of what some of our colleagues have done, then we certainly can do that. Mono County, as you can see on this slide, they have key language to their mission, vision, values. It may be hard to see in the boardroom, I know it is on my screen, but within mission, vision, and values, they've focused on what their core services are and identified key tasks that will be done over multiple years to be able to fulfill the mission, vision, values of the organization. Reduced down a little bit more, this happens to be their annual plan that's connected to their long-range planning, and there's, as you can see here, without going into each one of them, under all of their strategic priorities, they have tasks, and this particular year happened to be 2018, very specific tasks that would be done within the organization so that they could be assured in the 2018 year there were things that were done to fulfill the long-range goals of the board. This is a pretty effective example of how you can see not only the strategic priorities, but an annual plan, and at the end of the year, I'm sure there was some sort of update or presentation as to what was completed in each of these task areas. So, this is a very, very good example from a small county, much smaller than us in terms of budget. Mariposa County, and again, I won't hover through all of this, that's really the board's prerogative to be able to identify what these focus areas are. There's no science to this. This is really the art of the board deciding what the priority focus areas will be, but in Mariposa County's example, under each of their focus areas, you can see that they have a strategic initiative and have laid out short-range time horizons as to when each of the initiatives will be completed. So, you can see the build-out of their plan. Below the mission, vision, values is what their strategic priorities are, and then the tasks that they'll be doing over the next few years under this particular focus area to fulfill their goals under that priority. Yolo County, I won't stay on this slide. I know it's probably hard to see, but they have organized their thinking a little bit differently under, all of their strategic areas are here in the center, and as you radiate out, they show the tasks that will be done under each of the strategic areas. And I think, much similar to Mariposa County, under each of their strategic priority areas, this is in the 2020 year, they identify under each of the strategic areas, strategic priorities, tasks that will be done to fulfill their goal in this particular strategic focus. So, another good example of how we can show the public the things that we are going to do throughout the year, aside from just the day-to-day operational things of the county, these are very specific tasks of what we would be doing with our department heads and our various departments to make sure we're fulfilling the goals of the board every year. Sutter Counties is probably the most basic of the plans, but I threw it in just to at least show that we're, as an example, where we typically annually talk about projects and very transactional things. In Sutter's County, they've spent time talking about what the strategic areas will be. They call them priorities, but they're a little bit higher level, and then over the course of time, there's multiple tasks under each year that would be completed to fulfill each of these priorities. So, I show you different arrangements from different counties so that we can see that it doesn't have to be a graphic-intensive and a very specific document that ends up just being a plan that we don't fulfill. A one-page document such as what Sutter County here has can be very effective in us being able to evidence to our public that we're fulfilling the priorities that the board set forward. So, we've done some of the similar work. We haven't gotten, obviously, all the way through the work that the counties that I've highlighted here, but we have done some of this work. The board was involved, and board and department heads, in fact, were involved in 2017, August 15th and 16th, there was a two-day planning workshop that was facilitated by an outside consultant, the board and department heads, and if I understand correctly, even some employee feedback was incorporated into that, those workshops. There were subsequent, there was a committee identified and did subsequent work to the planning workshop, and ultimately in 2018, brought forward a recommended mission, vision, and value statement that the board adopted in January of 2018. And then again, in 2019, we discussed it in my 90-day report, and I presented some information that I did on a SWOT analysis with the department heads. And so, just to have some flavor of the content behind, I think this may be hard to see in the boardroom. It is in your presentation. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Could you explain what SWO SWOT is for the public, please?
Yeah, my apologies, Madam Chair. Thank you for that. SWOT is an acronym for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so, it's not necessary to go through that effort per se. It doesn't have to be a SWOT analysis, but involved in all of our planning should be some thinking about what are we really good at, and making sure that we keep efforts in the areas that we're already strong so that we stay strong in those areas. In the case of weaknesses, what are things that we would want to improve? What are target areas and strategies for improvement? And the opportunities and threats are really the horizon scan of what things might be coming out there that would provide us an opportunity to leverage, or a threat that might be something we would have to take into account in our planning. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you focusing on that and reminding me to explain that. I know this is probably hard to see in the boardroom. It probably is equally hard for our public to see. I wanted to show some of the content. I actually can't see it on my screen, but I wanted to show some of what the board did with the department heads on the planning agenda from back in 2017. There were items for roles and responsibilities, relationship between the board and CAO, opportunities for employee and department head feedback that ultimately the board took into account when they adopted the mission, vision, and values in January of 2018. And then I threw in a slide real quick that I reviewed last year in July with the board. I didn't put in all of the SWOT analysis that was provided by the department heads and their input, but I really wanted to come back to something that I started on earlier that it was identified by our department heads, the strength of our county really rests in our employees. And that's obviously always the case in any organization, but we all know that we hire amazing employees that have a strong sense of community, and there's deep pride in serving our county. We know that, and we're all quite proud of that. I hear the board speak about that when they thank any of our employees that come before the board. We're tough here. We've been through a lot, but we always bounce back, and we're resourceful. But some of our weaknesses, and the reason why I want to identify this is because it was about a year and a half when, year and a half ago when we talked about this, communication, accountability, we have a lot of turnover, we're aware of that. We know that we have dated facilities, and we've talked about those. We don't necessarily have a long-range plan that employees can understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish here in this county. And some of that, I think, then ultimately impacts some negative feelings within our building walls because our employees don't always know where we're going and what we're trying to accomplish, and so they can't connect to the work that we do. And this was resonated in some cases from the notes that I saw from 2017 sessions that we had. It came up in the SWOT analysis in 2019 that I presented to the board, and I would submit that these weaknesses still continue today. And the reason why they continue today is because we haven't yet gone through the effort of identifying, from the board perspective, what are the most significant weaknesses we have in our organization, and what's our effort going to be to address those. And so, we really, for lack of a better term, I would say we've treaded water since the strategic planning efforts in 2017, and now here in 2020, almost '21, are not very much further along in our planning processes. So, that leads us really to the, you know, the board's piece of this as we move forward is some questions for the board. And the first would be, is the board content with the current state of the county? Are we comfortable that, given our resources and the challenges that we're facing, that the weaknesses that we do have that have been identified, if validated by the board, are they weaknesses that we recognize that we are going to continue to have, and we don't necessarily have time and effort to put towards those? Or, in the alternative, is the board comfortable with recognizing we do have weaknesses and putting time, effort, and resources towards those so that we can shore up those things that we're not best at? That's the first question. And does the board wish to initiate or continue the planning process? And if so, we need to talk about how we might do that. I have glazed through this presentation so that we could have more discussion than presentation. We could certainly look more in depth at the work that was already completed and review the effort that was done by the board and the department heads in 2017. Facilitated discussion from an outside consultant is always a consideration, and it's quite honestly very typical that that's done in strategic planning, but it's not necessary. The board could consider and may discuss a committee effort. We did already have a strategic planning committee that put a lot of work in, so that is something that we may be able to reconstitute and put back in place. And then last, at least for the questions that I'd like to pose to the board that will help inform, hopefully, the direction that you give me going forward, is who should be involved? The more in-depth strategic plans, if you look at Yolo's or as an example in Napa, there's a community component where the community has weighed in, there's an employee component where the whole of Napa County's employee base was able to provide feedback. Department heads certainly need to be involved as well. And then any other key stakeholders that we may identify. It's important for us to at least recognize that our stakeholders are a pretty complex group, and so finding ways to be able to include stakeholder feedback into the process is something that I'd like the board to be able to discuss and provide direction to me as we go forward. And then the last piece before I open it up to discussion, just so that the board and/or the public, should they wish to be able to look at any of the strategic plans that I've highlighted here, I've provided the link to them so that we could go back to them if we needed to. I don't know that that's necessary in today's meeting, but I wanted the board and the public to be able to have the reference material should they wish to have it. So, with that, Madam Chair, I would like to bring my presentation and my speaking piece, other than question and answer, to an end and open it up to the board discussion, and question and answer.
Mr. Stoppard.
For a start, we have, what have we done to this point? In 2018, there's adopted mission, vision, and value statement. What is, can you define to us what that was from 2018 so that we have that? Do you know?
Supervisor Stoppard, actually, even in the board agenda piece where we asked for action, it wasn't outlined, and so that's probably the first place I would be critical of where we go back to is I wish I could tell you off the top of my head, but I'll have to bring it back again because the evidence of exactly what it was isn't as easy to find as one might expect.
Okay, so it would possibly be a matter of watching the actual board meetings?
And our budget books have it, the departments have had it as well. I could go back to it. It's been utilized. It's not as if we haven't printed it in places, but what I would suggest is that our mission, vision, values are things that we really need to have close to the heart, and they really are kind of the elevator speech for any organization. So, the fact that, you know, I've been here a year and a half, and I can't tell you what they are, and we don't know where they reside is maybe evidence that we either need to review the process and/or make sure we thoughtfully review what the mission, vision, and values are to make sure that they're still current for us today in 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. Let me get to the next steps just from my perspective. The first bullet point you have here is the board content with the current state of the county. That's double-edged sword. I would say I'm very content with the strengths we have within the county, but I think that some of these weaknesses, moving forward, we can iron out. We have a lot of strong departments, but we can get them aligned together through communication and accountability. So, that would be my answer to that. I think there's more work to becoming better. And then the second bullet point, does the board wish to initiate continuing, to continue the planning process? And my answer is, from my perspective, is yes. I've been supportive, following through with a strategic plan. I think it's a good step in the direction. You gave us very, very good points on, you know, staff not knowing why they're working on something. I think this will give a more clear view to them. I think it will give them, you know, a little more buy-in to it all, and they know how they're all integral to the work that's continuing to be developed and progressed on. to the work that's continuing to be developed and progressed on. So that's where I'm at on your bullet points for right now, I'll leave it to the rest of the board to continue.
Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Alt, thank you for putting this together. I want to take a little bit of a higher level view here, in that the first thing is, is a mission statement needs to be something less than a paragraph. The simpler it is, the more effective it is, and the better able people are to align to it. So all of the priorities, and I noticed a lot of these counties use a five-max alignment, so from that, we determine what are our priorities. And anytime that we do that, there's going to be a financial cost involved, whether it's immediate or long-term, it'll be there. The greatest worry, and it's really not a term, worry, is that it is a continuous process, and that if we simply write something down and lock ourselves into a direction, coming from business, that is probably the most disruptive thing you can do, because you no longer have the ability to be flexible and to be able to modify easily the direction that you take. Once you lock yourself into a long-term contract or some type of a process, oftentimes it's very hard to unlock yourself from it. Have you taken the time to look at the dangers that are involved in strategic planning?
I'm not sure what you're referring to specifically, but certainly we talk about some of the challenges, the time and effort. There's obviously risk mitigation strategies we can build in as well that we need to consider, but if you have something specific, I can try to address that, Supervisor Mills.
Well, I was just, my concern is, is that if we spend time involved in strategic planning, and then for some reason, the financial aspect of the county takes a different direction, or there are other emergencies or more pressing needs, those have to be built in to the conversation. It can't be, oh, well, we need to add that. Those five priorities probably need to be very complete to the point where there is no reason to want to make any additions or adjustments because of the changes in the dynamics of the marketplace or in the dynamics of government in general.
If I might speak to that, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you were done, Supervisor Mills, I didn't intend to.
No, that's fine, I appreciate any response you have.
What I think is important about your point, I wholeheartedly agree with you, I would suggest for us, and I'm not predetermining what our three or five priorities might be, but for us, we've had enough experience in this county to know that maybe one of our strategic priorities is resiliency, and looking at that, not just from our disaster response, but what does it look like to be a resilient organization? Now that we've had COVID, what does it look like to be able to continue to stand up county operations? How do we provide service to the public, even if the public can't come in, or even if our employees can't come into the county? How do we still do the work of the public in a way that the county employee is resilient? That we as an organization are resilient? Do we have the right technology? Do we have the right systems? Are we modernized in such a way that we can do the work? And then we can add in other pieces along with, you know, not only internal resiliency, but how we serve the resiliency of our communities. And I think as long as we have a component in there that acknowledges exactly what you said, that if there's something difficult that might happen, we get the good fortune of, in this county, of being able to face those challenges frequently. So if we build that into our thinking, I think it ends up being one of our strategic priorities to be responsive to, or proactively addressing it, rather than just waiting for the next big thing to happen to us.
And I appreciate that response, because the point is, is that with all of this, there has to be a method of implementation, a process by which you achieve whatever direction or goal you're looking for. So I just don't want us to be, in any discussion, locking ourselves to a specific direction and then, and spending a lot of time and effort on, and then finding that you're going to need to make some modifications to it, which will totally upset the apple cart. So the resiliency piece is a critical piece that I think all of the counties that you mentioned here, it somehow is missing from their discussion. It just doesn't seem to be as much of a priority as it needs to be. So I hope that a public copy of this will be placed on the website so that the public can have a chance to look at it.
Yes, sir.
Presentation.
If you wouldn't mind, I would like to respond to your points about the plan being flexible. You obviously have experience in this area, and not all of our public do, but you're absolutely correct. In a strategic planning process, it's part of why you reduce it down from a long-term, high-level mission to annual plans. And typically, what is done is that you set your annual plan, and if we had a strategic plan, when we did our goal-setting at the beginning of each calendar year, we'd make sure that the goals are tied into the direction we want the county to go long-term. And at the end of the year, you would receive some sort of update, whether it's a scorecard or update, or a presentation from me or the department heads, to be able to show what our plan was, what the board asked us to do, whether or not we got it done, and was there a good reason why we didn't get it done? Maybe we found out one of the things that we had intended to do became antiquated, or a disaster struck. Maybe there's some reason why we didn't accomplish the work, some of the work in a particular year, but as we move off into the next year, we reassess whether the work we had planned in the long-term is still the right work, and we continually, by doing an annual plan, make sure we're targeting the work that's most important towards serving our future. So in that way, it's iterative, and it's thoughtful, we're able to reassess at points in time, rather than, as you mentioned, just have a 10-year plan that says we're going to be the best county out of 58 counties in California in 10 years. That's great, and it's a lofty goal, but without being able to set each year what the things are that we would do to accomplish that, and reassessing them annually, then we'd be locked in, just as you suggested. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to clarify on that, and I totally agree with you.
I thank you for the response. To me, mission statements have always been simpler the better, and that we have to ask ourselves as a board and as a county, why are we here, and what are we doing? What are we really doing? And that the mission statement needs to reflect that very clearly. So if everybody understands why are we here, what are we doing, it'll all fall into place and be very simple to move from. So I thank you for
Yes, sir.
...the amount of time that you put into this, and the ability to have some input on it. Thank you.
Mr. Stoppard.
I just want to follow up. Mr. Alt brought up a great point on resiliency. Take a look at Napa and Sonoma, they've highly prioritized resiliency through the fires and then had more this year. They've taken extravagant steps in that direction, even though they do have different demographics, dynamics, and possibly geographics, as opposed to Calaveras County, there's probably some stuff we could probably cherry pick from there, moving forward, that we may be able to implement into ours and not reciprocate the work. Just a thought, but, you know, back to the bullet points, I am supportive of moving forward on this.
Mr. Tuffinelli.
Well, I've looked up the agenda for January 9, 2018, and there is a mission statement, draft mission, mission, vision, and value statements, and it looks like that's what was adopted. Says, "Mission: Calaveras County Government Serving, Strengthening, and Supporting Our Community. Our vision was Calaveras County, a community of agricultural, historic, and recreational abundance, where residents and visitors can enjoy safety and prosperity. The values: integrity, we hold ourselves to high ethical standards; balance, we value our heritage while striving for continuous improvement; resilience, we respond creatively to challenges; and service, we serve the public with hard work, civility, and respect." That, I think, was the discussion, if I remember, I'm trying to remember back on that date, I think three of us were here, I think that's what we basically adopted.
Still worth it today?
You know, we could go back and have the conversations, if that's still what we're looking forward today, changing some of it. Is that our values or mission? Here's where I am. I'm very committed to, I think, having committees. I look to our facility ad hoc committee, and just that committee itself, and what's got accomplished, because we conjoined that committee and were committed to moving forward projects that hadn't been done in years. I pointed the jail as one of them, H V A C project, re-roofing of a historic building here in San Andreas that was just in disrepair and actually being ignored for years by the board. But the committee came together, we worked, and we had a focus, and I think that shows when you have the right people and the right committees focused on what is being presented by the board, that their priorities are, you're going to get things accomplished. So I would truly like to see this committee reestablished, and coming forward back to the board with what they feel the county needs to go forward with, and in what direction over the course of the next three years, maybe five, I'm not interested in a 10-year, or even maybe even a five-year, because things change over that course of time. What may be important today, it may not be important tomorrow. So at least review on a yearly basis, say in January, every January, or December, or whatever, and review where we are, what has changed, if anything, and maybe a different direction on how to get to where we are wanting to focus on, or maybe change that focus because of current things that are happening that need to be changed. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Guaramendi, do you have anything you'd like to address?
There's nothing that's been said here that I disagree with, but I agree with Gary. I mean, we have, you could open up your budget book, and you read your missions on the front page, so I didn't think that it was hard to find, but I think that, you know, that's a very high-level document, and I think most of those things we're all going to agree with. We want to do all these things better. I think where, as Gary, I think, was alluding to, where it gets down sticky is when we get down to the grasp, to actual actions that we want to take. I don't know the best way to find that out. We hire a C A O to run our day-to-day. I think, when I look around, you know, I don't think, you know, I think that, as Ben stated earlier, no one's going to say that everything's great and we should just stay. Of course, we want to continually plan going forward, but I would like to take a look at, how do we operate? There's a lot of things that we face daily that are legacy issues that have just been built over time. Nobody had any bad intentions to them, and they may not all be bad, but we ought to evaluate them at this interval and say, you know, are the people who report directly to the Board of Supervisors, is that appropriate? Or should we think about maybe changing that up? What is the structure of our offices? And how do we align our work? A lot of this was built, you know, as a reflection of the crisis of 2008. You had to do a lot of things to make things continue to work, and it stayed that way. We've dealt with some of that, with issues like parking lot issues for positions. But I want to take a deeper look at, you know, are we doing things in the correct order? Is our structure correct? Are we providing the efficiencies for our citizens that need to happen, to continue to forward? We may find out, hey, you know what, we're doing things great, but we may also find ways to be better. 2008, you didn't have the same tools that we have today, as far as the internet, you know. There's just a lot of pieces that I'd like to take a look at, but they're the deep dive part of this, not the broad issues. I mean, if there's strategic objectives that we want to take on, like we talked about taking on cannabis, that was a strategic objective based upon trying to build the economy, and agriculture and other things. So I would like to get down to the brass tacks. We could talk about the broad vision, but I think most people are going to agree, everybody's going to say health and safety, everybody's going to say resiliency. What do those actually mean is where I would like to spend our time. And that may be in subcommittees, as Gary pointed out, and might be coming out of staff who are actually doing this day-to-day work, who are going to know. I remember in school once, I was told, talked about, British Airways had a takeover, and they were able to reform their culture in a very short time. And what they did was the executives, board members, and their chief executives went out and talked to the employees and asked three questions. They said, "What do you do? What obstacles are in your path that we could remove?" And the third one, which I always love, is, "What do we do as a board that confuses you?" And that sort of opened up a conversation that led to systematic change. Maybe we ought to, you know, we have learning to do as well, but, you know, the people who are actually doing these jobs probably know a lot of the answers to these questions, if we're willing to ask them.
Especially the last one.
Right, right, I mean, we have to be clear.
Yeah.
And, you know, heck, I get confused sometimes coming out of our meetings, but I think that generally we're steering the ship fairly straight.
Okay, I think that I'm not necessarily content with the current state of the county, and I think we have the ingredients, but I just don't think we have the order in which it should be. Like, I know the ad hoc committee's been, you know, very successful, but my question is, is why do I need to have two supervisors on an ad hoc committee? Why can't there be the strategic or the goal of facilities? And a goal could be taking down the jail, or the parking, or whatever specifics, but if we're saying our employees really know what to do, one, it starts with us. We set the stage, how we treat each other, how we treat them. And if we say facilities, just sort of generally, then let the people in facilities determine how they should go. I mean, why we establish the ad hoc, I understand, but do we have to have supervisors directing how each project should go versus this is the goal? Maybe when we do goals, yearly goals, as Al brought up, we could say, well, we'd like to see, you know, the jail taken down, the H V A C, the parking lot, the things Gary mentioned. So I think we need to take a little higher view. I think we, as a board, culturally micromanage. And when you have five supervisors going into a department, and each of us saying something different, that doesn't sort of bode well for the overall. Now, we each have respective challenges from our own districts. You know, I want to know how X Y Z project's going, or a subdivision, or Blighan Road, if it's a road project. That's a whole lot different than each of us going in and giving maybe a different message. So I really would like to support the idea of a strategic, strategic plans, and looking at things a little more globally, and that the employees, like Supervisor Guaramendi said, they know how to get it done. They just want to know from us, what are your priorities? What is it that you see? I'm not interested, like I thought I've heard the rest of you say, you know, beating up maybe the mission and values, that that's probably maybe already there. I'm interested in, I'm not sure what the strategic planning committees look like, I'm not interested in establishing a strategic plan committee if we're not going to, as a board, commit to what it is that they say, and not have it go on and on. I mean, if we started this in 2017, it's now 2020, going into 2021, and we're still talking about it, that's a no for me, that we need to have a tighter timeframe on this. I was looking at one of the goals from one of the counties under their strategic plan, and had to do with, and I'm going to just paraphrase, roads. And so if we say to Public Works, "We want you to maximize road dollars," we're saying to them, "Wherever you can get money, we will" to them, where, wherever you can get money, we will support that concept. We will support any grants. We will support, well, SB 1. I just think we need to step back as a board and give an overall guidance of where we think the county should go. All of us love Calaveras County. That's not the issue. We're committed to it. For the most part, the employees are committed to the county, too. So we have that resiliency there. I mean, and of course, always a good example is when we have a disaster, whether it was the Darby or the Butte or COVID, the wagon circle and the departments come together and they make things happen, and they don't need us supervising that effort. I mean, I just heard all of you tell Ms. Stranger today how impressed you were with what she's done and her staff. They did not need direction from this Board of Supervisors to know what to do. And that's kind of where I think we have to look at ourselves first. We have to change our culture, and we have to be, you know, willing to do that. I T is another example. You know, we want our departments to be as tech-oriented as they can, and Trackett is one. Some departments use it, some don't. Maybe that's appropriate. I don't know. I'm not a Trackett expert, but if we say that that's one of our overall goals, then let the departments come to us, let tech services come to us and say, this is how we can make it happen. And then at budget time and at goal time, we can review that. But I think the questions that, what did you say, British Airlines asked, I think that's very valid, and we need to be willing to do that, too. Okay, that's a long way of saying I support us proceeding with strategic planning and putting a schedule together that help us through that process. Mr. Stopper?
Y'all bring up very good points, and I don't really think, for the most part, I hear anything I disagree with. To the point, Mr. Toffenelli brought up about, you know, the five to 10-year, I think, and being locked into something. I see a strategic plan as a framework for moving forward. I definitely can support his idea of flexibility. It goes to the point of, like, when I first got elected in here, there was a few people that were giving me some advice that have experience. They say, you need to be at the 40,000-foot level. Sometimes when we're at the 40,000-foot level, we miss how some things are actually working when they hit the ground. So I think the flexibility in our strategic plan as we move forward, being able to, you know, not necessarily rewrite the roadmap to success as much as change our priorities yearly would be a good step in that direction. But I continue to support working forward on this. I'm very receptive to a timeline that Ms. Callaway's putting forward. I'm not sure what that is. I know a strategic plan doesn't happen overnight, so it's a work in progress. And even at a point where we get to the point where we agree that we have a document there, it should continue to be a work in progress as we move into the future. I mean, maybe to be revisited yearly as Mr. Toffenelli suggested. You know, just to say if there's anything that we need to change so that we can make this roadmap to success a greater roadmap to success, the board changes, people come and go. So I completely support that. If we're going to talk about a committee, what does that look like? When do we want to start it? And that, you know, that's, that's something I would question right now. You know, what's that committee look like? When does it start? What's our progress look like?
Okay. Mr. Guaramendi? Just a minute. Mr. Guaramendi had something to say.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, you know, we do have to be at the 40,000-foot level, and that's good advice, but also, you know, since you're bearing all kinds of advice, the, you know, the best fertilizer for a field is the owner's boots. So there are times when you have to be down in the field, when things are stuck, and we should maintain that flexibility. Harry and I went on this ad hoc committee because we weren't getting these projects done, and we needed to show as a board that there was a commitment to move this forward, and it shows a priority level. It shows that we know, recognizes the problem, and we need to unstick it. We might be part of the problem, so we unstuck it. Going forward, I don't know, we'll have to debate whether it's good to continue the ad hoc committee, but it accomplished its goal. So I want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a box and say we can only do it here. I would ask that on the committee, we ask, you know, our C A O, who we do hire as our chief executive, to take a look at things like our org chart. Does this make sense where it's going? Like I said before, it's happened in organic manner. It's okay to evaluate and say, yeah, it works fine, or no, it doesn't. So I want to have the ability that should this board direct, if we can, you know, move from 40,000-foot level to boots on the ground on specific projects, and we continue to be willing to do that.
No, I agree with you on that. I guess I'm saying, what is it we didn't do that we had to do that? I mean, that's where I'm going. I mean, why is it that we had to? And are there roadblocks that we created or for some, because we weren't doing annual project review, that we had to do it? I'm not saying right or wrong. At the time we did it, it was the right thing to do. Just generically, do we start doing that? That's where we get into where we've micromanaged. And, I mean, I think it was important at the time that two supervisors were on that to move it forward. I want to know, what is it we did that we even required two supervisors to do that? Were we not clear in the direction we gave? You know, we could have just sort of...
And sometimes, Madam Chair, it's just a matter of showing up. Yeah, it was pretty clear what our directions were going back to 2017 when we started coming up with the facilities budget, but it really, you know, I think that, you know, having supervisors come to these things on a regular basis and be engaged does change things. I'm not saying exactly what was broken, but it certainly, whatever wasn't working is now working back now.
Oh, I stand corrected. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Could you allow the C A O to respond first?
Oh, I'm, thank you, Mr. Mills. C A O, Walt?
I brought the slide up for the weaknesses to try and help illustrate, I think, some of what's been discussed. So, and thankfully, Deputy C A O Von Latta sent me the, all of what was approved by the Board, too, for mission, vision, values. And I don't mean to act as if that wasn't important. Those were huge steps that department heads were involved in. It was, it was a good process that the Board went through. So I support the work that was done, and my recommendation, frankly, would be that we leave those in place. Who's going to question whether it's an important value, the value of the county integrity, balance, resilience, service? But my question would be relative to that is, what are we doing to evidence that? What was the last thing that we did in service of the public? It says we will work hard and will be nice and respect the public, but what evidence is there that, you know, if we do work hard to serve the public, are we working hard at the right things in resilience? We respond creatively, creatively, my apologies, creatively to challenges. It should be our role as not only leaders of the organization, but department heads and administration to be able to say, here's the projects, the types of things that we would recommend that will evidence that we're responding creatively. Here's what we're going to do in the next year to show you what we're doing to be resilient. I don't think over the next five or 10 years, our mission, vision, or values would change, but at least annually, we should be, at a minimum, talking thoughtfully about what are the projects and how do they align under our values, and how do they meet the strategic objective that we wish to fulfill? And I'll use the animal services as an example. We've talked a lot since I've been here and much before I was here about what are we going to do with the shelter. I would submit part of our planning, when we talk about facilities and being one of our weaknesses, is that we need, and we absolutely need a strategic focus on the county's facilities. We can't serve the public well if we don't have the appropriate facilities. So what does that look like? Do we have a 10-year build-out? Do we want to come, do we want to bring all of our services into one, you know, centralized location? And to do so, do we need to build buildings? How would we finance them? That's all, the facilities and the long-range facility plan is one strategic focus, and it's going to take a lot of time and effort and money to be able to facilitate that. But at the end of the day, because we don't talk about that from a strategic perspective, we're still on the same spot where we're not moving forward on whether or not we're going to look any different from a county government facility perspective 10 years from now. And so that's, that's just one example, resiliency or service. I would suggest that if we talk to our public, even though we know, and I hope you hear me resonate all the time, how proud I am of the employees that we have, we have fantastic employees that show up every day and work hard, but are we working hard at the right effort that ultimately is going to serve our public better in the long run? Are we modernizing our operations? Are we becoming efficient? Have we made it easy for our citizens to serve, to serve themselves with self-help? Are we using technology to make sure that they can get permits or whatever things that they need from us quickly and efficiently so that they can move forward in their own lives? And if we haven't done that, I would question whether or not we've keyed our efforts to what these values are, and frankly, that's a disconnect that many organizations have. And so I don't think we necessarily need to, personally, that we need to start all over with our mission, vision, values. I believe that our next step is to now talk thoughtfully about what our next year's goals are across all of the departments, to be able to show that we are working towards resilience and service and continuous improvement. All the things that we've said in our value statement, we should be able to prove those at the end of the year that we work towards those, and right now, that's the gap that I see. And I think it goes to what Supervisor Toffenelli has said, is that we do that annually, and we make sure that our goals attach to these things so that we're moving these things that we said were so important forward every year. So I think it covered some of what both Supervisor Stopper and Supervisor Toffenelli mentioned, and it really goes back to where Supervisor Mills started the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills, did you have something?
Additionally, because you, a great segue. You talk about goals, and I know that when I was in business, it was a continuous review of those goals, a review to the point that by 8:05 every morning, I needed to know where I was at in relation to the goals as a manager. When you talk about the culture, the Board needs to be the policymaking, policy-setting body. What oftentimes happens, though, is that we need to have some understanding of the process needed to implement those policies. It's great for us to make a statement of policy, but then the staff is kind of like confused at times about, what are you trying to do? And so I don't want future boards to make any policy statements that are ambiguous in their nature. We need to be able to ask the staff, and the question of the staff is, if we make this policy, what is it going to take for us to get to that end goal? And so it's interesting. We had a C A O, and I'm going to tell you, it didn't last very long, but he had embarked on an entire program with the entire organization called Sowing the Seeds of Our Culture. It died a horrible death in business. So I'm not saying that that is going to be the answer, but that we need to look at our culture and how our policies relate to the culture which the overall organization is. And that's really it, a policy. We are, when we have policies being created from somewhere other than the representatives on this board, that leads to disconnects and leads to problems. So I want us to be very clear that policies need to come from here, but we need to understand very clearly what those processes are that are needed to make those policies happen in the real world.
I think that's what Jack was saying.
And that is not micromanaging. That's simply just understanding what it is. So you get the ad hoc committees going because you're wanting to get a review. You're wanting to get some accountability for those things that the Board has given as direction. And, but there's, at some point, you've got to let go. As a board, you've got to let go and let them run the ship from that point. You've shown them how to do it. Run the ship from that point.
Good point. Does, I mean, so the question before us is, do you want to continue with the strategic planning process? Mr. Guaramendi?
Yes.
Mr. Stopper?
Yes.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes.
So, yes. So, Mr. Alt, we do want to continue with the process. Mr. Mills, you were very clear.
I won't be here to do a whole lot for you, but...
I know. I think your last comments were right on target.
Thank you.
Very right on target. Mr. Alt?
Yes, Madam Chair.
You have the direction? So I think, going back to what the next steps are, we do want to continue with the process and maybe look at what's already been completed, have that come back for review, and maybe look at, I don't know what facilitate discussion means, whether you do it or we get somebody else. At this point, I think we'd like you to do it, and if we feel we need to move on, we can. Committee effort, maybe we could look at the, what's been done, and again, going back to what's been done, and if that's something that the Board would like to do, we could reestablish that. Who should be involved? I'm not sure. Who should be involved in the committee or who should be involved? I think as we go forward, it should be the Board, but I would think if you could maybe talk to the department heads at your department head meeting and ask what their thoughts are. Again, we want to capitalize on what's already been done and try and cultivate and use what's been done, and where we need to make changes, we can do that. Do you need any more clarification?
No, I think that's enough of an inventory for me to at least bring something back. I think what I hear you saying is for the December study session, that we'll go back over the work that's been done and take the next step in moving forward. I can, I can tell you, as far as the department heads, we have talked about it somewhat in our department head meetings, and there was some question as to whether or not they would be involved. I obviously am going to advocate for us utilizing that knowledge base, but I would also suggest, and that's why I had the question there, is that, you know, we have anywhere from six-plus-hundred employees that all have, you know, valid thoughts and observation about how we run the organization. So maybe part of the next discussion is not just who would be involved from a committee perspective, but how we might be able to get input to help inform our next steps, whether it's from the community, our employees, our department heads, and how we might be able to do that without creating a rock that we can't lift, just so that we have more points of information to help inform the process as we go forward.
Okay, all right. That's fine. I was just asking the vice chair what he thought about, do we want to do December? And the decision is, yeah, we want to proceed with December.
What do we want to accomplish in December?
Just more of a study session, bringing back what the department heads said, some of the information on the work that's been done in the past, and then we'll, as we move into the new year, we'll get down to the brass tacks and the working wills of it.
Well, and I'm sorry, I guess I put words in the Board's mouth that I shouldn't have, not necessarily that we said we would have a study session in December, but, you know, really, that's a little shorter list. I could bring some of that back in an information session and a... I could bring some of that back in an information session in a 20-minute segment in a regular board meeting if we don't want to have that meeting just for this particular item.
No, we don't want a meeting just for this, this in December.
Right.
Madam Chair, do you, I mean, I think Supervisor Mills pointed out, so I don't think I'm being disrespectful to his position, but we have a new board member joining us in January. Wouldn't it be better to plan with all of us together?
Well, I, that's why I asked the vice chair.
I'm fine with it either way.
Okay.
It's your call.
Some of the foundational work is pretty straightforward, and I don't think we're being disrespectful to either one as we proceed. I think Supervisor Mills has had great input to this point I don't think anybody could disagree with. So, you know, either way, I'm fine with. You know, I'm not here to make the decision on it either way.
I'm fine with it either way, too.
Okay. CAO Alt, let's move this out to January, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. There's any public discussion on this item?
I have no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to supervisors' announcements. Does any supervisor have something they want to share? Mr. Mills, I know you have something you want to share.
Yes, for the third time in a little over a year, we now have the development of a third clinic in Calaveras County, thanks to Dignity Health and the hospital, Mark Twain Hospital Foundation, and the work with Copper Valley Development at Town Square. If you want to see the picture, it's probably one of the few times you're actually going to see me with a mask on, so frame that one where you get a chance. Trees are being removed by Toolumee County. Great cooperation with them to, on the entrance on their side to the O'Burns Ferry Bridge to give better visibility for large vehicles that are already on the bridge before people commit themselves to that. And those are being removed as of yesterday, which is very, very impactful. The amount of accidents because of low visibility, it's been a big deal. And you may have seen in your emails about the wagon trail project is potentially going to receive another nearly $6 million in boost. Hope that that passes in December when it's finalized, but that will give us a tremendous opportunity to get another phase of that project underway and be able to fund it properly. So thank you to Mr. Pack for his work and diligence and also COG for their work and diligence in making that happen. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Last night, I wasn't able to attend the LAFCO meeting because we were, I was attending a Mountain Valley EMS special meeting to where we went over and awarded or approved the Notice of Award to American Legion Ambulance Service for their RFP. What's going to go forward now is there'll be some negotiations going on between Mountain Valley EMS and ALA to finalize a contract. That contract will be coming back to the board, Mountain Valley EMS board, sometime in January for approval. I asked last night about, right now, ALA is on an extension of their contract, which has a lot of different stipulations in it. Because the RFP had response times that were less than what they're operating under now, I asked if we could get the contract approved and in place before May 31st, which is the end, May 31st would be the end of the extension they're working on now. In other words, if we could get it in place by March or April, at least we'd be under those guidelines and the response times would be shorter than what they are under the current contract. And ALA was open to that. There's some things that need to be put in during the negotiations if we are going to do that before May 31st, because the conditions under the RFP, they have to purchase new equipment that put, that's be put in their ambulances that will be able to be tracked where they are. Right now, we have no idea where ambulances are when they're out on a call. Only we, only communication we have is when they call back in, so we have no idea. This tracking system is like GPS. They go in these ambulances, anytime, we can see exactly where the ambulance is. And it's going to increase even more with response times, because if an ambulance is transporting to Sacramento from Mark Twain Hospital, Sacramento, or Davis, or San Joaquin County, a patient, what's they're responsible of doing? Right now, we don't know where they're at on their way back until they get to a place where they check in. And this way, we'll be able to see if they're on their way back and if there's a call come in close to where they're at, we'll be able to dispatch them to the call that's closest to them and we'll be able to get the closest ambulance to the calls coming in. It should reduce call times. So that's what went on last night, and it will be coming back to this board, although the JPA is the sole authority for letting this contract. It will be coming back to the board at some point. So you have all the parameters of what's in that contract. So that's what I have.
Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a statement, I mean, we spent the first part of this meeting giving accolades to our public health staff, and they've really been working hard for a very long period of time. It's not our practice to address comments that come out of public comment. We have a certain level of threshold, certain threshold where people can get up and say anything they want about us, and frankly, they do. That's just the nature of our business. We all signed up for it. But I do take offense at anybody referring to public health workers and comparing them to the Nazi secret police by calling them the Gestapo. I don't think that's fair. I think we have to continue to respect and uphold our public health workers, and I think it's important that we defend, we defend them as a board when our staff is attacked unjustly, especially with something as silly, if not cruel, as calling them Nazi secret police or the Gestapo. So I take offense to that and I wanted to let, I think I speak for myself, I hope on behalf of this board, that we do not share that belief in our workers.
I definitely take offense to the use of Nazis and secret police. I think that's overused. What the Nazis did is entirely unacceptable to humanity, and it's just become a buzzword for everything we don't like. So I totally agree with you on that. Mr. Stoppa, thank you.
I agree with defending our employees and I think we need to stand by their actions. They're doing their jobs, they're doing their jobs well, and I couldn't agree more. On a lighter note, and Mr. Mills brought up, we're going into Thanksgiving.
Are you cooking?
You coming? That would make three households. Yes, yes, I am cooking, Ms. Callaway. You know, I just, I think, you know, our personal perspective, and this has been a family tradition for quite some time, Thanksgiving is one of our best holidays. We give thanks to everything we have, give thanks to the people that we have in our lives, and be able to, you know, provide for ourselves, there's another thankful thing. You know, it's a great, great holiday. And going into this, you know, I'm thankful for the way the state's brought forward their recommendation. I think everyone should remain diligent. We do want to remain safe. We're going into harder times right now and I, you know, we will be celebrating Thanksgiving at my house. We'll remain as safe as possible. If anybody's sick, we just won't have them. But at the same time, I think, you know, it's definitely a time to have family in your life. So I just want to remember, remind everyone, the public, celebrate it, appreciate it, remain diligent, and just be aware of your surroundings and do it in the best way that's safe for you and your family.
At LAFCO last night, we approved the Municipal Service Review and the Sphere of Influence for the Valley Springs Public Utility District. We did miss Gary's attendance there since he brought insight to the review when we discussed it at our last LAFCO meeting. I have been attending virtual, the CSAC Conference, which is kind of an interesting doing that. I mean, the nice part is you get to stand up and go get a cup of coffee and, but, yes, CSAC's California State Association of Counties is doing a good job on this conference. I'll be meeting with Public Works and Jack Kautz on Thursday regarding the Benefit Basin. We all sort of have Benefit Basins and, because we want to close the Bret Hart Benefit Basin up. And then CAO Alt and I will be meeting with the Masonic Lodge representative regarding their parking lot that we've been renting and maintaining for years, going back to when Tom was supervised. So it's well over 10, 15 years ago. So they want to, the contract's up the end of this year, they want to negotiate. So that's it. Ms. Glanville, do you have anything that you'd like to address?
No, Madam Chair, I do not. Thank you, though.
CAO Alt, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
No, ma'am.
Counsel, Ms. Edwards?
No, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.